Everybody ready? All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Thursday, December 2nd, 2021 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And in accordance with AB 361, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually until further notice. Go to the county website and see all the different ways you can join us. With that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in a salute to the flag. Thank you. Laura, would you do a roll call, please?
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Present.
Noah Levy. He's out. Mike Newman.
Present.
Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
Brian Mitchell. Melanie McAver.
Here.
Thank you, Laura. Looks like we have a quorum. The next item is item number C, and that's discussion of remote meetings. Suspected Director.
Thank you. So this is, I thought we had... So this allows the commission to make a decision in terms of continuing to conduct meetings between now and January 1st. And in accordance with the Board of Supervisors' direction, the board is going to look at going back to the late meetings in January. And so we may want to consider that in January. And we will give guidance on that hopefully by the meeting of December 16th. But what we would ask you to do today is to adopt this resolution indicating that you're going to continue to meet remotely at least through the month of January.
All right, so is there a discussion on this? Go ahead. Okay. Sorry.
Alan, Kent Sawatzky, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
I strongly support you having a continuation of meetings that can be held both virtually from us at home, especially for the people in the outlying areas, this has not been present before, and also having physical meetings for this. It's imperative that for openness and transparency that this happen, and it's imperative that people in the far outreaches who cannot take the time and should not take the time, should not have the negative carbon imprint of driving all the way to meetings are still able to participate. So I'm hoping what you'll move forward here with here is a hybrid, where we can still participate from wherever we want and not be in the chamber. I may be in the chamber or not because I enjoy the actual interaction of seeing reactions and the actual public input, possibly see or possibly no. That's a Mexican term down there that I use. So anyway, I strongly support moving forward with some form of a hybrid. And this should happen in the supervisor chambers. It should happen in every single meeting in California and throughout the United States. We've seen how technology works. We've seen how transparency and public participation has benefited from this. But that's what I'm supporting here. I hope I'm not off topic, but I think that's what we're addressing. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Okay, well, this is just to... We are going to have that discussion down the road, but this is just to continue doing the Zoom meetings until the end of December. And...
Okay, well, I support that also. There we go, until the end of December, and then hopefully we'll have a further discussion relatively soon, so we know which ballpark we're playing in here. Thank you for my opportunity to speak again.
Thank you. 7108. Go ahead, Bonnie.
Hi, yeah, if this is going to be discussed later. I just wanted to say that all the counties in the state that have went and had the in-person meetings have done so with the hybrid. And so I strongly support continuing that and hope that the commission does as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public that wants to comment on this while we've got it open? Right, seeing that, I'm going to close the public. Is there any panelists or commissioners that have any thoughts on this? Right? So would somebody like to make the motion to continue through the month of December?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution continuing the Zoom meetings until the end of December.
I'll second it.
Right, you have a motion and a second. Laura, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Melanie McAver.
Yes.
Right, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. All right. So Director, agenda modification.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to do this a little bit iteratively. I've got a number of changes to bring up. One of them requires a motion. And the first one of those is item number four, the Ocean West Manufacturer Home Park Expansion. But we need to continue that, allow that to be noticed. And so we would ask the commission to continue it to the meeting of December 16th, 2021. To do that now, that would be...
Yeah, why don't we just take care of that? You motion to continue, number four, the Ocean West Manufacturer Home Park Expansion.
I'll motion to continue item four to the December 16th meeting.
Second.
Second, Laura, roll call vote, please.
Newman.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Melanie McAver.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimous. That's one's taken care of.
Thank you, and then the commission will notice that there are many items that are continued on the face of the agenda. But there are three remaining items that are before the commission for action tonight. That's item number two, the Green Management Group of Humboldt. Item... Number six, the Brosgard's and the Brosgard Special Permit. Actually, there's only two items. And so what I would recommend that the commission do is move those up on the agenda before the discussion on cannabis to allow these to be done. And then the commission would have the remainder of the meeting to discuss the cannabis processing.
I think that's a great idea. So is there any opposition to that? All right, so we will move those items up.
Alan, you're not, you're not being heard.
Okay, sorry, I'll move in closer. There was a problem last meeting, I don't know why. But... So we'll go to have item number eight of the... And this is your opportunity to speak on any item that did not on tonight's meeting. So look to attend. And the first one is our friend in Ken. Go ahead. Oh, it's 7429. 7429.
Hi, good evening. This is Roby Tenorio, and after the last meeting where the chair instructed those in the public who had submitted letters to not speak, and those who spoke would only be allowed two minutes. I'm not really sure what to expect tonight, so I thought I would use this time just to bring up something that seems to be overlooked on an ongoing basis, and that the county in all these decisions, especially to do with the cannabis, is the lead agency. And it's been my observation that when the public voices their concerns, the commissioners reassure us that the various agencies that are there to protect the environment and the wildlife and the water, that we're reassured that, you know, the Department of Fish and Wildlife or the Water Board will make sure it's safe and not going to harm anything. But your commission probably believes that those government agencies will be tough because that's your experience, but the county is the lead agency, and they're in charge, and they determine which projects those agencies should, you know, how much those agencies will be involved in the projects and which ones to be involved with. So I'd like you... Am I out of time?
No.
Okay, and also, one last thing is the caps, I feel, are arbitrary, the current caps. And they should be based on carrying capacity for the land of the community. So thank you very much.
Next caller is Sue Moore. Go ahead, Sue.
Thank you. Yesterday evening, the Arcata City Council postponed its decision on the old Arcata Road rehabilitation project and the certification of the environmental impact report. The last-minute postponement was due to a wetland issue in the Jacoby Creek Road area of the project. It was a resident group, Bayside Care, which alerted the city to the problem. Many of us in Bayside have raised numerous concerns about the impacts of the historic area, the safety and well-being of the children at the Mistwood School, the loss of trees and vegetation, and the complete change of character from a rural aspect of Humboldt County to a gateway to Arcata. Where were the Humboldt County staff, who we have constantly been assured are monitoring the project, ensuring that the environmental impacts are legally evaluated and assessed? Apparently, not as aware is the residents who combed through the tardily distributed 568-page final environmental impact report. We have a question. Why hasn't the Humboldt County Planning Commission heard this project? It impacts wetlands, drainage, culvert, air quality, ambient noise levels, and increases nighttime light in a historically dark sky area. Shouldn't Humboldt County residents and taxpayers be represented by Humboldt County in a project of this magnitude in a rural area? It's an area already impacted by unresolved code enforcement cases, unpermitted buildings, and an abject failure to protect and enhance the wetlands in the coastal zone within the cumulative impacts of this project area. The myriad deferred major maintenance issues in the Jacoby Creek area need to be resolved immediately by Humboldt County, not deferred to another agency that may or may not include them in its final project sometime in the distant future. We'd welcome an onsite meeting with Mr. Ford, Mr. Bronckel, and Ms. Maynal to outline the issues faced and develop a clear and timely plan to fix them. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be on the spot, I just...
No, it's fine. I'd be happy to look to schedule a meeting with the residents out there.
Next caller is 7454 Ken. Go ahead, Ken.
Alan, thank you, John Ford, for being willing to meet. These people have a serious concern out there, it's legitimate. And the county is totally a... They're the lead agency, in my understanding, as possible. We don't know who it is. It's not, it's not in the city, it's in the county. And yet Arcata seems to be manipulating something here. It's very disconcerting that these people have to bring this to you without this having been brought forward. So thank you, John, for being willing to meet with these people. I think you'll be enlightened to find out exactly what's happening out there, and it seems to be happening throughout the county. Mr. Mulder, my name is Kent Sawatzky. My phone number is 668-5268, or 496-7454. My email is K E N T S A W A T Z K Y at hotmail.com. Any of you are welcome to that information. Any of you are welcome to reach out to me at any time. I'm out there, I'm transparent, and I highly recommend that some of you take the time to do so. There, Humboldt County started this whole cannabis project, and we're building a plane while we're flying it. And the county should, of every six months or every one year, at the very least, this goes back to 2016. Things have changed, public perceptions have changed, needs for things have changed, and it was a flawed document back then, it's a flawed document now. So you missed your opportunity, Mr. Mulder and the rest of you, to go ahead and go to the supervisors for this. So now the only way for environmental conscious people who really don't believe in what's been happening here to do this is through the court system. And I'm happy to do it, I can do it financially, it's no problem. And now that's the direction we're headed. So instead of you doing the right thing and going to the supervisor and changing this, Measure S is coming back before the voters allegedly this next election cycle. The people will have their say, and some of you will be very unhappy with what's about to change because we shall be changing this to the court system, same as Rolling Meadows, that set precedence. This, this whole thing about the water without having it certified by a correct person is going to be addressed in the court system, and it could drag out for five years. And there may be injunctions that basically unwind all the permits that you have out there that are based upon an illegal basis, especially ancillary uses. There's been no sequel on that, and that's totally BS as far as I'm concerned. The only ancillary use any of you should be entitled, Mr. Mulder, is basically to have maybe 2,000 square foot of clone room, and that's all you need for your thing. Probably could do five different projects your size. So you might want to call me before this ends up in litigation. If you have a way to dissuade me from this, that's fine. Otherwise, I'm putting together a dream team of litigants, of attorneys, and we shall go ahead and make right before the environment and for all the people out here that's been totally thrown on the bus, especially by Epic and Mr. Noah Levy, and Mike Wilson, and this whole Epic crowd. So thank you for my opportunity to speak today. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ken. Next caller is Bonnie, 7108.
Hi, this is funny again. I just wanted to make some comments about some comments that were made at the previous Planning Commission meeting by Commissioner Mulder, talking about the other side. I'm not sure what the other side is, but I just wanted to say, you know, if I'm being put on a side, I want to be, I'm on the side of the environment and wildlife, our communities and our neighborhoods, public safety, which means safe access for the community and our emergency vehicles. I'm for a sustainable industry. And I support the real mom and pop full-sun operations. I do not support the green rush growth. I do not support generator growth. The whole thing with the generators, when one point, you know, it was coming around, was talk like, oh, there'll just be a little supplemental backup. And now we've got permits going out with a good 24 hours a day. We didn't want indoor growth. We didn't want generator growth out in the hills. And now that's what's happening, which is calling it mixed light. So, and also the comment that particularly concerned me was something about when you start having in-person meetings where people have to drive and can't have the convenience of calling from their home. Well, I felt like that remark was anti-public participation, and I was pretty surprised and taken aback by that. And I sincerely hope, and I think the county has the duty, to continue with remote access to these meetings in this rural county. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. Go back to the commission, and we will move on to item number F, which is the consent agenda. And we have two items to do. The first one is move to approve the November 4th, 2021 Action Summary. And a second, move to approve the November 18th, 2021 Action Summary. Is there anybody who has any questions on this? Or does somebody like to make a motion to approve the action summaries?
I'd move to approve them, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
All right, Peggy, thank you. Any discussion about it?
Yes, Chair, I just want to make, make mention, I wasn't here at either one of those meetings, so I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Mike. Welcome back, Mike. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Laura, a roll call vote?
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Mike Newman is abstaining, so Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, so that brings us to item I. We're going to skip past the cannabis discussion and come back to that. So we're going to go to public hearings, and the first one will be item number two, Green Management Group of Humboldt LLC in the Garberville area. Now, I'll take a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Byron Turner, presenting this project. The Green Management Group of Humboldt Use Permit, number 11713, and Special Permit. The APN is 223032001, located in the Garberville area near the Humboldt-Meniscano County border. I'm going to share my screen. So this is a use permit for 17,740 square feet of existing mixed light cannabis to be relocated into six greenhouses. The drying occurs onsite in an existing structure. Processing is all off-site at a licensed location. There's going to be six employees at peak season. Ancillary propagation nursery, it was noticed as a 3,210 square feet. A condition of approval has been added to reduce it to 1,740, consistent with the 10% that has typically been required. Power, currently each cultivation site uses it, power is from generators. Currently, each cultivation site uses multiple generators. The applicant is proposing to consolidate and reduce the amount of generators onsite and also proposes to install a battery storage system to reduce generator usage as well as replace the gas and diesel generators with propane generators in an effort to reduce the project's carbon footprint. This is a 1.0 project, so the use of generators is permitted. At this time, there are no plans to convert from generator to another source. Water is sourced from 150,000 gallon rainwater catchment pond, as well as two springs that do have approved pointed diversions. The rights limit the applicant to 185,000 gallons a year from the springs. In addition to the pond, there are 72,000 gallons of storage tanks. That, these totals will satisfy the needs of the applicant, which are approximately 222,000 gallons a year for their project. Approval of the project also requires some removal and relocation of existing hoop houses and structures and consolidation into reduced, a reduced number of grow sites. It is also conditioned to prepare a restocking plan for any timber conversion that went on onsite. As noticed previously, a special permit is required as a part of the development in the stream site management area, which will allow the applicant to use and maintain the approved pointed diversions, as well as deconditioning additional pointed diversions and stream water crossings, stream crossings, coal maintenance, replacement, and restoration of the site. You see an aerial view of the location and the topographic map. This is the site plan. The access is from the south where the rainwater catchment pond is, and there's a home there as well. The most of the cultivation sites are to the north. The access to the site from Highway 101 to Oak Crest Drive to Benbow Drive, then a five-mile unnamed driveway access off of Benbow Drive. A road evaluation was done and indicated that the driveway is adequate for the proposed use. Additionally, the county is requiring improvements at the intersection of the driveway and Benbow per the county standards. It is recommended that the Planning Commission consider the addendum to the mitigated native declaration. Make all the required findings for the conditional use permit and special permit based on the evidence in the staff report, and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit for Green Management Group of Humboldt LLC, subject to the conditions of approval. I'm available, that concludes my presentation. I'm available with any questions, and the applicant's agent, Mr. Lou, is here as well for questions that the commission might have.
All right, Thomas, I see your hand is up, so...
So I must have misread something here because I thought this was accessed off of Twin Trees Road, and I swear I just heard the staff members say this project was utilized off of Oak Crest Drive. And if that's the case, I know that commercial activity wasn't approved on a different project, AS Enterprises or something like that years ago. And if Oak Crest is the access road, if I need to recuse myself because that intersection is within a mile of one of my residences.
Any staff?
No, I'm, excuse me, hang on a second. I may have misspoke as far as the access site. That was meant to determine where the, the distance from the highway. It is accessed off of Benbow Drive. And Twin Trees.
You said Benbow Drive to...
I'm sorry.
Oak Crest Drive, though?
You're, you're correct, it's Twin Trees Road, I think that was a typo.
What page would I find that on to Oak Crest?
All right. It's, it's in the project location site, around the first, first page or the second page of the staff report.
Thank you. Brian Mitchell?
I wanted to ask you a question, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for staff about this. Confused because it doesn't have our typical language or a date upon which the generators will be phased out. And this one's talking about switching to propane generators, which I don't recall ever discussing that as a more appropriate, you know, type of generator. So I'm just wondering where that has come in instead of the standard language that we've been adding to most projects.
That was the, the applicant's proposal was to move to propane generators. There isn't a code requirement to transition from a generator to P G N or other source. However, this commission has been requiring it in many occasions.
And did we, did we initiate the discussion about it? Or did, in this case, did we just take the applicant's proposal and move it forward as a staff recommendation?
Commissioner Mitchell, I did speak with the agent this evening regarding the generator use. Commissioner Mitchell, I did speak with the agent this evening regarding the generator use. And they have, do not have plans to move off of the generators at the current time, from what I understand.
Maybe that could be a recommendation that you have for the supervisors later in our discussions later, Brian. Peggy, you have your.
Hold on. I just wanted to say, Commissioner Mitchell, I apologize Peggy for jumping in on you. That certainly can be added as a condition to this project, which the commission has done before. If you would like, we'll be prepared with language for that.
Thank you.
I agree that, it seems like the last couple of meetings, we kind of went backwards where, you know, before we were on this roll, where we're talking about water catchment and phasing out generators. Not completely, but only for backup. And now the last couple of meetings, it's like, they didn't propose it, so we didn't put it in. And I don't think that they, that that should be the new standard. I like a little bit more information about the spring diversions because I don't think I've seen too many of them. I mean, I know what a spring diversion is, I have a lot of experience with them, but I haven't really seen that on too many of the other applications. And why are we veering away from requiring the catchment like we have on almost every other project? I feel like we're kind of stepping backwards and maybe there's not a, you know, code that says we have to do this, but we've required it of others. And if we were out of line then, I don't know why we were doing it. But I think that we shouldn't be digressing, we should be moving away from the generators. I know that I've been, you know, we switched over to propane generators because they're supposed to be safer. But so maybe that's a little bit of a concession there, but not much.
Thomas, you have your hand up.
As far as rain catchment, I believe our commission put a condition on a project to have a large amount of rain catchment. And I also believe that was appealed to the board of supervisors and that condition was removed. But maybe I'm incorrect. And as far as generator use, last I checked, ordinance 1.0 still has that. So I see it, it's in line with the ordinance in front of us. And I land glided this APN to make sure it wasn't closed because I heard Oak Crest Drive and it's not anywhere close to me. So just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions before we open this? Peggy, is your hand backed up or just didn't put it back?
Yeah, in terms of, anyone has the right to appeal to the board of supervisors and they can reverse our decision, but that doesn't mean we have to do everything they ask us. I mean, they can remove us if they don't like our opinion, but I think we should still vote the way we feel.
Okay. So Mike Newman, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, just for clarification here, I'm having a little difficulty with my video, so it's not working. I'm trying to pull plugs and start it again, probably have to restart my computer. Are you hearing me at least?
Can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so with that, I'm going to open this up for public comment. And first publicly is Kent, go ahead.
My name is Kent Swawski, and I just want to let you folks know that the stride you've been moving toward and the direction you've been headed is making Mother Nature very happy. I'm all about the environment. I'm about dogs, old people and children being protected and transparency. This is something that has not been happening. And just because you have three supervisors by the name of Virginia Bass, Michelle Bushnell, and Rex Bone, who will not be here next time there's an election, I can guarantee you of that one. There's no reason to go ahead and say, just because those three people turned over something that your decision wasn't right to start with. Lead with your minds, lead with your common senses, and lead with the environment being your number one thing that you need to think about. That's a very strong recommendation, that's called karma. And those three people have some of the most negative karma I've seen in Humboldt County. That will be seen as we go forward. I highly recommend that you basically take this project and look at it as conservatively as you can. These people are pushing the max. Ancillary use should be no more than a 20 by 24. And Mr. Mulder can tell you that's all a clone thing takes. He can dispute me on this, but I know cloneologists and they could probably handle this grow and five other ones regarding the clone process. So your ancillary use here should not be what you have here. It's going to be litigated and Mr. Mulder probably will not have any ancillary use when it's done because it never went through a secret. Nobody's disputed this when I brought this forward before. It's a fact and it will be litigated in the court system. So that seems to be the only way we can get this message to you. Kudos for doing the right thing. As far as, as far as this person converting over to solar or some other use, there's, it should be two years at the very most, I guess, and plenty of time. I understand that propane is less volatile, it's a great thing. But no, it has the same negative carbon imprint as any of the other gases that are used for a generator. The generator does not belong there. Now regarding roads, I have a really big problem because anybody else doing a project in Humboldt County regarding roads cannot self-certify their roads. That's unheard of. If I want to do a subdivision and Mr. Bronco says, well, maybe you're going to need a traffic study or something. No, I'm going to self-certify this. This is total BS, and I'll say the term bullshit, that you allow anybody to self-certify their road. And I've talked to people and they say, these are the people who go out and make these projects happen. Yeah, I did that, I went to the nine yards, I went out and actually looked at it. Nobody should be allowed to self-certify. So thank you, Byron, to speak on this project and in general.
Thank you. Next caller is Stephen Lou. Go ahead.
Stephen Lou, I'm the agent for the applicant. Wanted to address some of the concerns that were made regarding generators, spring diversions. The site does have 150,000 gallon rain catchment pond. That's used as part of the principal water storage for the property. It is a 1.0 project, so it is allowed to have surface water diversion as part of this, part of its operations. And that is what this applicant is proposing. It's used to fill some of their tanks, and water storage tanks on the property. And water rights have been obtained through Fish and Game as well as the water board. And as part of this process, they've decommissioned about three legacy springs on the property. And this, I just, I'm pointing this out because the, this product falls under the 1.0 ordinance. And I want to remind everyone that the intent of it was to set a baseline and to mitigate or reduce the impact. And I want to emphasize that much of what this project is doing is to try to mitigate and reduce the impact. They would love to have electrical power on this property, it's just not very feasible because as I just measured, it's close to three and a half miles away from the 101 and where power would be located. And just doing a back of the envelope calculation with 200 foot pole spacing and $10,000 per pole, which I think those numbers are probably gross underestimates, you're getting up to $850,000 to get power to the property. And that's, that's given the economics and the fact that the cannabis industry in Humboldt County is barely holding on at this point. It's financially driven and there's not a huge opportunity to do a cost share with where the finances of the industry and the neighbors and the region are. That's why they're proposing to utilize propane generators as a reduced impact. The use of propane will eliminate the risk of spills and chemical leaks. The use of the propane generators also is to replace existing diesel and gasoline powered generators. And the benefit of the switch, in conjunction to what the consolidation of the cultivation sites, we're decommissioning thousands of feet of roadway to consolidate the sites to smaller, or not smaller, to just multiple discrete grow sites to eliminate two to three sites, eliminate road miles traveled, and switching over to a propane powered generator system, which will reduce the noise impact throughout the property. It reduces the need to drive around the property to refill small diesel and propane generator, or small diesel and gasoline generators. And it reduces, and the other intent of this project is also to convert the greenhouses into automated ones with automated tarping systems. This is not something that's like a full-blown. The automated tarping systems will reduce the need to drive around the property, reduce the carbon emissions from having to service multiple remote sites. So while I understand the concern about the use of generators as an ongoing project need, I also want to point out that if we had to run three and a half miles of new overhead power line through a rugged rural area with extensive tree cover and forest, that's also a source, it's also a risk to the environment public with respect to a potential source of, ignition source for fires as well. So I wanted to point that out. And I'm also available to discuss any other concerns the commission may have on this matter.
Thank you. Public 7108.
Hi. You wouldn't have to have all those generators if you were growing outdoor in the sun. So it is a choice to use artificial light to do that. And I believe somewhere I read in there, the plan was 24 hours a day of these generators. Once they got the propane somehow and maybe some batteries, they'd cut it down to 12 hours a day. So I want to read what's on page 111 of the staff report from the California Department of Wildlife because they have made a recommendation that proposed existing projects may have potentially significant adverse effects on biological resources, specifically the northern spotted owl. So CDF requests that the applicant assume presence and avoid impact as determined by a qualified biologist in conservation with California Department of Wildlife. Avoidance measures include, but are not limited to, the prohibition of generators, project lighting and fans, including those used in ancillary structures, nurseries during the breeding season, February 1st to July 9th each year. Following the breeding season, CDF requests the succeeding measures as conditions for the project approval. And that's the, pretty much the same ones that the county had. So Fish and Wildlife is saying, there's a problem here and you need to do this, but it sounds like the plan is saying, well, no big deal, we'll just go ahead and do all that. And some studies that they did said noise from road use generators bands and other equipment may disrupt hunting of northern spotted owl, which primarily uses hearing to hunt. Also, exposure to vehicle noise has been shown to increase threat hormones, and which was particularly evident in males during times when they were exclusively responsible for feeding their mates and nesting. So that was a 2011 study. And all this noise and all that, yeah, it affects the northern spotted owl and all the other species that are out there as well. So I don't know how the county overlooked that. Is my time up?
Five seconds.
Okay. This being of in the staff report, project description of putting more than 10,000 square feet of ancillary. Why is that even in there? That then they have to come back and say, well, we are going to reduce it. Staff, that shouldn't be in there in the first place. So thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to see response, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public wishes to speak on this one? See and none, I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to the commission. And Thomas, you have your hand up.
So never have I ever claimed to know all of these things. In a brief response, I would say if somebody wanted to, on staff, to reach out to someone such as Kevin Jodry, that guy has a lot of knowledge as far as immature plant space needs and how many clones you can cut out of a square foot. It's wild the amount of wealth of knowledge that guy has. As far as questions, I did hear Ms. Blackberry's concerns. I believe we do have rules in place for dark sky. The question I have is what, what is the county using to police those things? Because we've heard previous comments of concerns of uncovered greenhouses. So are we using those satellites to pinpoint those or what kind of things are we doing?
Unfortunately, it's extremely hard at this point to use satellite imagery because it's got to be geo-located and coordinated with what we know. It's going to be geo-referenced, and we just haven't gotten there yet, we are looking at it. Right now, what we are basically trying to do is go out at night and identify where there are uncovered greenhouses and tag those. And it's been hit and miss. The thing that we find is that not everybody leaves things uncovered every night. Seems to be what happens is that in some areas where one person leaves it uncovered, everybody leaves it uncovered for the night. But then the next week, everything's covered up again. So it's been a little bit hit and miss, a little frustrating. One of the things we are doing for the next spring season is we are developing a comprehensive plan to address this because that will be our significant code enforcement and monitoring effort.
Okay, so we have a plan in place to mitigate that concern that Department of Fish and Wildlife had that was read into the testimony, that's what I just heard.
Relative to the lights, yes, one of the things I was trying to do. Yep.
Okay, that's, that's what I was getting at right now, thank you.
Anybody else have any thoughts on this one? I'll agree with the, I'll comment on the dark sky issue. I've been out quite a bit early in the mornings lately. And I've seen a number of grows that were emitting light, and this is at first light. So it's happening. We've always had concerns about code enforcement and it's, I don't know how they're going to enforce this one. How they're going to enforce any of it, but anyhow, that's another conversation for another time. So where does the commission want to go with this? Thomas.
Go ahead, Brian, it sounded like you, Brian was speaking before me.
Hey, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, in brief summary, believe that we need to be consistent as much as possible, understanding the fact that each project is different in its circumstances to some degree. In this case, I think I'd feel most comfortable if we added an additional condition of approval that instead of them converting to propane generators, they had to develop a power budget. And by December 31st, 2025, 80% of their power needed to come from renewable sources and allow them to determine which route is the best way to get to those renewable sources and not dictate solar or PG&E or whatever that is, and just let them determine what's the most cost effective for their operation.
Did you want to add the water collection as well, Commissioner Mitchell?
I'd be amenable to that, but I definitely need to have the power issue addressed before I'd be willing to vote or consider it.
definitely need to have the, the power issue addressed before I'd be willing to vote or consider it.
I'm in agreement with, with you on that.
So was that a motion, Brian, or was that just discussion?
Just as the first person to speak their opinion, that's mine. And if I hear that we have some sort of, you know, majority opinion, then I'll be happy to make that a motion.
All right. Mike Newman, can you put your hand up?
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I have a hard time with the 1.0s going against the rules that have been put in place. I hate moving goalposts and rules. If the applicant volunteers to do things, which is what has happened here in the past, when they've agreed to make those changes with the power, for instance, and those changes there, I'm all for that. But if they're not making that possible amendment into the staff recommendation, I have a hard time approving more requirements than the 1.0 requirements that we are currently at right now.
Thomas?
I share Commissioner Newman's sentiments and would definitely share that we shouldn't be moving the goalposts. The question I have for staff is propane generators. I, I've been told that there's one governmental agency that really, really likes propane generators. But has there been any scientific data? Because I can see from my experience with propane versus diesel generators with the same amount of load on them. The propane generators consume about four times as much fuel consumption per hour as well as their longevity, as far as how long they last. They about half as long of lifespan as far as replacing them. So just curious if we have any scientific data there.
I don't, at this time, we don't have scientific data to address that.
Okay, thank you, that's kind of what I thought.
I don't see any other hands up, I have my hand up, so I'm going to try and. I, I also don't like moving the goalposts, but we've been pretty consistently asking that applicants adapt to the energy issues and giving them till 2025 to get 80%. I think this is pretty darn generous. I, so I don't see that as being a problem, I think that it's something that we do very consistently. I will, that's not an issue for me here. I'm going to be against this project because of the road issue, self evaluation, it's my pet peeve and I'm going to be consistent in how I vote. I've said that and I'm going to be honest to that. So I will be against it because of that item. And I believe that CDF, they have pretty clear, they have concerns and I don't see that we should be overruling them. We always ask them too, a lot of times they don't respond, but this time they did and I respect that. So my thoughts on it. So Thomas, is your hand back up or?
Yeah, I put my hand back up. Are you done Chair?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So in regards to generator use, I'll talk about this more in the appropriate agenda item. But since this commission started, from what I've seen, this commission started putting in the generator clause. A little history, early 2000s, there was roughly two plus 300 KW or bigger generators in Humboldt County in the southern portion of the county. I've seen more 300 KW plus generators within this portion of the county than I've ever seen of in my lifetime. So, and it's a direct correlation of the generator clauses. So why we unplug a 65 or 100 KW generator on a licensed facility? We plug in a 300 to a 450 KW on an unlicensed facility. So what is the overall environmental impact cumulative effect by us putting in these clauses? That's happening in an unregulated market because dropping the baseline, we factor in code enforcement in the sites that have been cleaned up. So do we start factoring in the large indoors that we're actually promoting by these conditions?
All right, thank you, Thomas. Well, where do we want to go? Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. Mike, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution, find the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial CMM L U O pursuant to section 15164 State Secret Guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit and approve the green management group of Humboldt LLC, subject to the recommended conditions.
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Can I ask a question of staff, please?
Sure, go ahead, Brian.
So just to be clear, because there's been different comments made by various commissioners. The comments from CDFW, as currently written, do the conditions of approval address all of the concerns that CDFW brought up? And if not, what additional changes does staff need to recommend so that we have addressed all of their concerns? Thank you.
So Ms. Ryan or Ms. Turner, do you have a ability to answer that?
Yes, the attachment four, I provided a response that I sent to CDFW in regard to their recommended conditions and their comments. And staff did not respond back to my email. Typically, they would respond if there are concerns on projects.
So Megan, could you do the commission a favor and kind of go through the, what the concerns are and what the responses are?
Yes. The.
And can you tell us what page of the report that's on?
Yes, okay. Attachment four, page 110 through 114.
Thank you.
So typically in the response to CDFW, I like to include the project description, which I did in this case. I clarified for them what the water source was, as that was one of their concerns and how the water estimates were. How they were, the water estimates were, came about. It seems to me through these comments that the, it seems to me from the comments that the additional work between the applicant and CDFW occurred because they do make a comment that LSA has not been issued, however, there appears to have be one. In relation to the northern spotted owl, two conditions, condition 19 and condition 20, talk about one containment of generators. The noise not exceeding 50 decibels from 100 feet to the noise source or from the noise source or to the edge of habitat. And the lighting condition, the applicant has to demonstrate to the department prior to using either of those or continuing the use of those, that they can meet those standards. That guidance comes from coordination with CDFW that we, the planning department and we've done over the years on the projects where we assume presence on the northern spotted owl. The, there's comments regarding the use of synthetic netting, the waste disposal. Those are included in the conditions of approval. The setbacks from water courses and the 150 foot requirement are, is also a water board requirement in the state cannabis policy that the applicant will have to adhere to that. And the one thing I wanted to check was the bullfrog management plan to ensure we had a condition there.
I see it on attachment one, it looks like number 16.
Okay, good. And so then, and typically when there are ponds, we would add that, that we add that condition. And that's, they also have that in their agreement with CDFW.
And then about all the culverts and things, number 17 in that same attachment.
Just pulling it up the language here quick. Yes, and so the, let's, okay. Yeah, so on condition 17, those, those recommendations are directly from the Water Resource Protection Plan. And so we listed them out specifically. So the Water Resource Protection Plan made the recommendations regarding the culverts. So they'll need to work with Fish and Game on those if they haven't already.
Thomas's hands.
Another points that I wanted to make aware to my fellow commissioners, why I feel comfortable in this. I felt condition number nine about how the applicant has to register with North Coast Air Quality Management District. So that means there, and then there's another thing where they have, so that way it's going to, it's going to meet emissions requirements. And then condition 19, as, as Ms. Ryan noted, there's the generator technically right now with the interim permit. I believe the generator is allowed to be used and by this approving this project, they're going to have to show that their generator is under 50 decibels before they can use it. And that's the way I'm reading the condition. As well as artificial lighting has to have a site inspection before they can use that. So I actually think it's going to bring the project into a better environmental standard than what could possibly be happening now. I'm not saying that's what's happening, but it gives that public protection. So that's what I felt was, these were some pretty good conditions written in the way they're written to protect the public interest and wildlife interest.
So if you had a first, did you have a second on it?
You have a second, yeah.
I also have a second and Brian, the third question, so. So we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? See none, Laura, or ask for a roll call vote, please.
Melanie McCaper?
No.
Alan Bonjio?
No.
Brian Mitchell?
No.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Thank you, Laura, the project is a no, four to two.
That's only for.
The motion was a four to two. So now you need to continue to read, to formulate motions until you have a motion that passes.
That's just the craziest thing in the world. So motion failed, it would delay like a trial motion might pass.
So Mr. Chairman, we may need your assistance to get a majority here, but I understand your philosophical disagreement with the self certification on the road. But I'm not, I'm not seeing how we can get to the four votes, given the three diverging opinions we've heard tonight. So I guess I'd just like to try out my motion that we adopt as staff has recommended with the additional condition of approval requiring 80% renewable energy developed in an energy plan implemented by December 31st, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Brian, we have a motion, is there a second to that motion? See none, the motion fails for lack of a second. So, somebody else likely make another motion or?
One of, one of the things you could do is to move for a continuance until you have a full commission here.
I don't think it would change the vote, but we could do that and we know where no will fall.
Or, or one of the things you can do is if you can't formulate motions to approve or a motion to flat out deny, if it's going to be deadlock at 3-3, you could make a motion that you find yourselves deadlocked.
What does that, what will that mean?
That's no action on the project, which is the de facto denial.
Well, I'd like to give the benefit of the doubt to Noah and let him vote. So I would make the recommendation that we, that somebody make a motion that we bring this or continue this to the next meeting and hopefully we have a full commission.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, a motion a second, is there any discussion on it? I saw a bunch of hands go up and then they changed, so.
I wanted to say, I, you know, I, I wanted to see some of the water capture in there, but.
Thank you, Melanie, I agree. Go ahead, Thomas.
So unless I read the project wrong, I think it has 150,000 gallon rain catchment pond. So I think it's pretty sufficient as far as, that's, I don't know, rough numbers, about 75% or two thirds of water consumption is in via rain catchment. So I felt pretty confident on that one. The question I actually had was to staff, but we already have a different motion on the table. So I don't think I can ask that motion procedure because we have a motion ahead of us and I can't ask about a different one, so.
All right. So we do have a motion in a second out there to continue this to the next meeting. Is there any further discussion on that?
I would just like further confirmation that the CDF was, was happy with, you know, the changes that were made, Meg brought up and that they covered all of their areas. I know there were other noise from the road and there was stress hormone levels being increased and overlapping of the growing during the breeding season. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you said they don't typically respond if they're okay with it. Just to reach out to them and make sure that that was sufficient to cover their questions or their recommendations.
Did that happen director in the time before the next meeting? To try, all right. Okay, so Thomas, your hand is, is it still up or is that up again?
I, I put it back up because the question brought up by Commissioner about DFW being happy. From my interactions with them and other people I've seen, when they sign off on an LSA, that makes them a lot happy. Because if you read in their email trail, they have no LSA and then there's an approved LSA. So that would lead some, myself to believe that their, their concerns as far as environmental have been met because they don't always sign the LSA, they may send them back to somebody unsigned, you know.
Thank you, good point. So we have a motion in a second to continue this to the next meeting. Laura, roll call vote, please.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes, I believe it deserves to pass today, but I will continue it.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes, same sentiments as Commissioner Newman.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Motion to continue this, this meeting, very unanimous. All right, thank you. Um, why don't we take a five-minute break? It's about that time, then we'll come back and do the second item. I will see you in five minutes. Commissioner Newman's been having trouble, so he's gonna be calling in, so bear with us to, when he wants to speak, so we can get them interacted with. All right, so that brings us to item number six, which is the Brosgard Special Permit Extensions in the Glendale area. And we'll take a staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Augustus Groschau. I'm a planner for Humboldt County. And I've got the Brosgard extension for you. It is a multi-use, um, let me pull up the correct screen. There we go. It is a multi-use, um, commercial cannabis facility on APN 516, 111, 064. Um, and it is in the Glendale area. Here we have an aerial image of the, um, site as it appeared, um, in August of this year. As you can see, it's currently being used for storage. Um, a neighbor of the applicant is renting out that space. The entire facility is about 30,000 square feet, um, uh, top, uh, 75,000 square foot parcel. It's gonna be volatile, non-volatile manufacturing, as well as processing and distribution. The land use is commercial services and the zoning is presently unclassified. It's in the Field Book Glendale Community Planning area. At this time, no changes to the originally approved project are proposed. And it was approved, um, on September 5th, 2019 by the Planning Commission. Um, we believe that we can still make the findings that were, um, required for the extension. And it would be, um, the extension would expire May 18th, 2023, if y'all approve it tonight. Because after it was originally approved, an appeal was filed by Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. And that was later withdrawn on May 18th, 2020. That is all I have to say for you with a recommendation to approve tonight.
Okay. Uh, is there any commissioners that have questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll open this up for public comments. And the first caller is Kent, 7454. Go ahead, Kent.
Can you hear me, Alan?
Yes.
So, so here is a quandary and a big problem we have in our area. And it's, in my opinion, been gross negligence. We had a general plan update. I don't know, how long ago was it? Four, five, six years? Seems like a long time ago. And this parcel is zoned unclassified. Part of the job of the planning department, the biggest part, was to go ahead and take unclassified areas and, and classify them. That's the zoning. You have a general plan designation, and then you have a zoning. That has not happened. And, and I'm, I'm guessing you'll probably just go ahead and say the same conditions apply. The other thing that's missing here, there was a community plan. And it was 90% complete, is what the people in that area desired to have happen. And that community plan has stalled out and it's gone. Now, in my talking with John Ford today, he says, "We're hoping to go ahead and put together some people to do a general plan." As far as a community plan. And this, this is where the people get to fine tune and say, "We wanna have this," or "We don't wanna have this youth here." And the county, in my opinion, has been grossly negligent. They totally took a Willow Creek plan, which was like six pages, and tuned it down to two or three little paragraphs during the general plan update. A lot of people aren't aware of that, but I spent a lot of time on the general plan process, which is the foundation for everything you're doing now, except the word marijuana and cannabis. Cannabis was not in the general plan that, that, that they did. The, the word, uh, marijuana was in there in one small little sentence or two little sentences. So you see how out of date our general plan is. And unclassified needed to be classified. That was the whole thing that was supposed to happen during the general plan, is take these. So, so you understand a little bit of the public angst in that all this effort's been done on going after cannabis permits, whereas the whole basic rest of us have been thrown under the bus. Those who are builders, who need to have designations, those of us like myself, which would love to do affordable housing on 1,000 square foot lots in certain areas, have been precluded from doing so because this overriding thing regarding the general plan has been thrown out under the bus. And so we're, we're a little bit anxious about this. Personally, I don't think anything that's unclassified and does not have a community plan should have ever been permitted. And the people have had, not had their chance for an input. So I, I'm hoping generally to give you guys a little bit of angst about what staff is doing and has done, and the foundation for everything you're doing here. So that's the reason I'm making these comments. And of course, uh, I, I'm, you know, you've already approved it, you're gonna rubber stamp it again. But do the people really want that there? That's the question. And you should be asking that yourself on every single project. And without a community plan and without, uh, zoning on this parcel, you have no foundation for saying that's what the people want. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Uh, next caller, uh, Lalania, do you want?
Hi, Commission, thank you. I'm actually, um, a partnership on this project. It was originally my project, and Mr. Brosgard came in to help support through it, and we became partners. So I, I appreciate what Kent is saying. However, this is the community. I grew up in this community. I went to high school here. I have an incredible reputation as a community builder. My integrity speaks for itself. And this piece of property's integrity also speaks for itself as far as this kind of project. It's actually one of the most likable pieces of property because of how clean it is for something like this. So we would really appreciate your approval of moving forward. As you know, this industry has been incredibly hard. There's been quite a few transitions. We keep getting investors ready to come and support what we believe we can build here, build here. Yet, we're now, we, we had investors on the table in August to build the vision, and we couldn't get this, this, um, extension through. It's taken longer, and that's happened to us quite a few times. So we would just like some more time to do what we said we would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public that wishes to comment on this project? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment, and I'm gonna bring it back to the commission. Where do we wanna go?
I feel like, uh, with extensions, I usually assume that they'll be approved unless new information has been provided that show a change in circumstance or a change in data that we weren't aware of at the time. That hasn't happened, so I'd be happy to vote to extend this.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Laura, roll call vote.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. All right, thank you very much. So now, we will go back to the cannabis discussion, which was item eight, that we slipped around with item nine.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask a quick question first?
Sure.
Actually, two, two questions. Number one, um, no, I, I, I've been gone. So, any of the, um, stuff, paperwork from the prior meeting, I didn't see it in my packet at all. Are we going back through all of that stuff?
Well, there really isn't anything to go back through other than discussion that we had. There was nothing recorded, nothing that we have, you know, recommended to the supervisors at this point. So, um, we're just furthering that discussion. And I was gonna try, I was having a discussion with the, uh, Director before, and it seems like we've got off on, on some pretty big tangents and, and, you know, big, big discussion topics. And I think that the whole idea was, are there, is there some small tweaks that we could recommend to the Board of Supervisors that might help, you know, to, to make this process go better? You know, small things like tonight, for instance, the, the, uh, getting off of electrical grid or off generators and onto the grid or onto solar or something. Should we make a recommendation that the Board, you know, look at that aspect of, of the grow process? Not change everything about the ordinances, just look at a specific accent or, or issue, you know? I pick the roads because that's the one I feel that there's a big issue with. Other people had issues with, with different things. I just think that we just need to make some small recommendations and not get into, you know, changing things dramatically. Just, you're suggesting to change things dramatically, but things that would just make it so we don't spend half of our meetings having the same discussion over each meeting. So.
Okay, so, so my second, okay, so my second question that is a little part of this, but off of that a bit, was usually at the first of our, um, meeting, we go through any supplementals that have been sent in. We talked about those. I didn't hear anything about that. Um, I see there are some supplementals, and there's one in particular that I wanted to ask about, which is the one, um, that has some information asking about freshwater watershed. Is that coming up for anything in the future, is my question, uh, so I can just disregard this at this point?
Oh, that is a specific question related to three different permits that are currently approved. What that is asking for is for those to be revoked, um, for a period of time. Without there being grounds to take action against the permit, it would be highly unusual to take, uh, action. If the county were in a position to declare or act during the drought emergency to, uh, curtail cultivation, then that would apply countywide.
Thank you.
So, Thomas, I see you have your hand up. Oh, you done, Mike? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
And just the other supplementals were part of this discussion, I believe. Is that correct?
Okay, I believe so as well. That was a very good letter, uh, from the person on, uh, Neil, very well written. All right, Thomas, go ahead.
This Exparte, I wanna be 100% transparent. Uh, company I own is a member of HCGA. They did have this meeting as one of their agenda items on the conference call yesterday. I participated in the beginning of the meeting. I left the meeting when that item came up, and I was texted after that item was done and re-participated with the meeting just because there was some very important state and industry topics other than our meeting here, but I did not take part. I physically left the meeting via virtual. Um, and then the other thing is, in regards to this, I did send Chair Bonjio a nice lengthy three and a half, I think about three and a half minute video of a road, uh, going to another commercial site within Humboldt County that happens to be a cell phone tower. So, someone can, uh, it was just informational. We didn't even, I didn't even call him afterwards because I got busy. It was my son's birthday that day, so. Other than that, that's all I have to share for Exparte.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, well, this is your opportunity to, to have something that we can get tonight. Our goal is to give the Director some things to write up and that we would like the Board to consider. So, um, I see Melanie, you can start us off.
All right, thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, I'd like to say I'm really, really happy that, um, the Director confirmed that we will, in fact, get the transparent maps in the, early in the new year. And that will really help us in our cumulative effects assessment, which we're required to do. And I'm also really happy to hear about the climate adaptation strategies that are underway, including, um, possible corridor. Um, however, uh, and so tho- those were the two main things that I was concerned with. And so I am very happy about those. However, having looked into some of the other issues that other commissioners raised over the last couple of weeks, um, I've become quite concerned that the, this whole idea that, let's call them 1.0 and 2.0, that the 2.0 applicants are, you know, somehow not worse off because the, I think it was Commissioner Mulder said, the 1.0 applicants were there first, and so they should be rewarded somehow, uh, for having stepped up to become part of the legal market first, which is, uh, in my opinion, really unsubstantive reason. And having researched it further over the last couple of weeks, I've become quite concerned that indeed the opposite is happening. Or in fact, it, it's going too far. So if you look at, for example, some of the, um, documents out there, the research out there in terms of equity, you'll see that most of the early applicants are white male applicants. A lot of the applicants that had cannabis-related offenses weren't even able to apply early on. And so there's a sense, a very strong sense, in which the, this keeping this 1.0 and 2.0 system actually penalizes people who were not able to get in earlier. And a lot of people of color, women, are less confident, for example, when things first come out, and some were just unable. Not enough money saved up, you know, there are a host of reasons. Uh, Sonoma County has an equity report, uh, out there that you can read. We have one. So we also partnered with HSU to produce a, a local equity report. And it just kind of amazed me that there was no reference to that in there at all. So I would really love to see the numbers, for example, on who applied under 1.0. And what are the demographics of those applicants? Further, we made, we have the Project Trellis, but again, I was amazed to learn that Project Trellis is not exclusively for 2.0 applicants. And it seems to me that if 1.0 applicants are already paying less and having an easier process, why should they be eligible to apply for the equity funds? So, um, I started off at the end of the last two weeks feeling really happy that the two things that I really wanted to see happen were happening. But now I've become a little bit disturbed over the situation that we have with the two different systems. I don't honestly understand why we kept both. I was not part of that process. I wasn't on the commission at the time. But I definitely would have voted to have the 1.0 applicants meet the requirements of the 2.0 standards. Uh, I don't see any arguments to have two separate processes, especially I don't see any arguments to have two separate processes, especially when one favors, you know, a certain group of people that we agree as a society, we're supposed to be doing the opposite for now. So I would like to see our recommendation be that we ask the supervisors to reconsider just having one process, the 2.0 process. And it just so happens, serendipitously, that actually takes care of all of the other commissioners' concerns that have been raised. Because the, the roads and, you know, everything else that has been raised by other commissioners pretty much goes away if we only have that one process. In addition to that, of course, it's more efficient to have just one, given that we do have some turnover of planners and so on and so forth. It would make it easier for everybody, I believe, and cost less overall if we just had the one ordinance for everyone to learn. So I feel like there are just so many strong reasons to have everyone be under 2.0. And I can't think of a single reason to keep 1.0. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Would you like that to be a recommendation to the?
I, that, that would, that's what I would like. In addition to the, the maps, of course, that we will need to look at cumulative, potentially significant cumulative effects of all of the, and for cumulative effects, you need past, present, and reasonably foreseeable future projects. So that would be all of the past projects, present projects, and projects in the pipeline for, for, that are, have applied for a permit. So we would need a, a map of all of those. And the director last time did say that that would be forthcoming.
Can I ask a point of order?
Go ahead, Mike.
Point of order. When is the public going to have input on this? I would think it would be towards the first part of this whole part, and then we would be, but that's why I'm asking.
What was that, Director? Well, we, we could open it up to the public first and then come to us. I just figured there'd be somebody that would start it off and then we would get the public. But would you like the public to, to go first? If that's the, the view of the, the?
It depends upon the rest of the commissioners. I would, I would feel it would be good before.
Well, I'd just point out to the commission at this point that you have spent about six hours, probably four and a half of that has been devoted to taking public input.
I agree. But people would need to have a discussion without opening it back up, which is at least the one that they probably not that name. So I will. Why don't we do that? Why don't we open it up to public comment? Go ahead, Thomas. I can see.
What did, I, I don't know, point of order, just as far as if we've let one commissioner speak one way and not have a chance to have all other commissioners that maybe have opposing views speak and then open up to public comment? Because otherwise I think it might be technically considered biased in one way, but maybe I'm wrong.
Could I offer a recommendation?
Sure.
Sure. Perhaps what the commission should do is deliberate, come up with a recommendation that they want to propose and let the public comment on that.
That's not a bad idea. That's kind of what I thought was gonna happen. That's why I just thought it would go and then.
As well.
Okay. So let's go that way. Let's, let's just keep this discussion going and, and then we'll get some public comment in, in just a little while. So go ahead, Thomas. Just go ahead, listen.
So as I respect every person on this commission, they take a lot of time out of their personal lives. I have very opposing differing, different views than what was spoken earlier. I feel if this county is to ensure public trust, that the goalpost cannot be moved. Those 1.0 applicants came in, came forward, and actually many of them's just, you know, open arms like, okay, this is what I'm doing. As far as the equity piece, I, I don't know. There's many of people of different ethnicities that I believe have applied for permits. I've, I've never looked into the demographics. I feel that we're land use and not the equity piece is probably more geared towards Project Trellis, but maybe I'm wrong. This is an industry that was unregulated for 40 years. It has brought billions, I mean billions of dollars into building the economy of Humboldt County. This is the first go at trying to make this a regulated industry that has oversight to protect public interest and environment and also gain governmental trust. This started as back to the landers that were like, I'm against the government and this is what we're doing and it's evolved into this. So if we're trying to ensure public trust, in my opinion, I don't agree like the ordinance 1.0 is the best, but if changing the goalpost, you're going to lose public trust. I spoke earlier since this commission has started putting generator clauses in there. There is more 300 KW plus generators in this county than it's just astronomical. As I said, in early 2000s, there was like two, 300 KWs. If any of you have governmental contacts, you could probably ask them about it. And now it's just, there's generators everywhere. As far as changing to 2.0, the Margot advisors, I think there was a really good letter that showed a, a lot of projects that would be out. And as far as equity, there was one person who spent 10 years in prison, or I think eight of the 10 years he was sentenced to in prison, and he wouldn't be able to move forward under that. Is, is that equitable? Is that right? Is it wrong that because the way I was born into this county, you know, I've had guns held at me by cops. I've been held at gunpoint. I've been raided. I didn't choose the ethnicity that I was brought into this world, but is, should I be discriminated against because I was a 1.0 applicant? I don't think that's fair to say to lots of other people. I don't feel that we should change anything. And if we are gonna change anything, yes, I do believe the other side of the coin, that it should be opened up for expansion, that small cultivators that live on site should be able to go from 5,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. Small cultivators with residences on site from 2,500 square feet to 5,000 square feet with over the counter, no fees, here you go. We want you to help sustain our economy in Humboldt County, live and thrive and protect the land. It just, I can't tell you how passionate I am against not wanting to change the rules. Those of you that were on the commission when ordinance 2.0 was being developed, I think that was a clear and concise message, except for the community plan areas, because that was unforeseen. It was unforeseen in the development of ordinance 1.0. And I'm gonna hold my comments for now.
Thank you, Thomas. The director would like to say something, then I got a thought as well about process.
Thank you. First of all, I want to clarify some things and, and, and remind the commission of something that was discussed at our last meeting. During the development of 2.0, it was the planning commission that advocated for kind of part, setting aside the 1.0 applicants and allowing them to be able to remain under those rules. And one of the things that is, should be considered about that. I understand the desire to have just one set of regulations. But if we were going to change those rules, the time to do it would have been three and a half years ago when 2.0 was adopted. People have been trying to make their applications complete for the last three and a half years under 1.0. Many of them, many applicants currently have submitted information to make their applications complete under 1.0 and are waiting to come to hearing. Many of those are stalled right now because they're on wells. And, and so that would be a colossal change. One of the things that we are very sensitive to is the whole equity issue. And that is one of the reasons why the small farmer ordinance was adopted. Because the effort there was to really go back and try to attract those folks that may have been alienated by a high cost demanding process by making a, a far simpler process for people who could come in and, and then participate in the, the process. They were at a scale that didn't require water board certification. They were in locations that wouldn't attract concern from CDFW. They were in existing curliges. And so, and they were also occupying the property. And, and so there have been folks that, that has been successful in attracting you. And, and part of that, that was one of the real efforts to achieve the, the equity that Commissioner McAvoy talked about. We, I, I just wanted to bring those things up because it's not like we have been completely indifferent to that. And, and we have continued to make amendments. 2.0 Small Farmer Initiative is a classic example of that. Thank you.
Having this last little part of the discussion made me think, are we gonna, do we want it to just be that if, if somebody makes a recommendation, that's what we send to the, the board? Or are we gonna have a vote on each person's recommendation as to whether we send it to the board on each issue? Because while we may agree or disagree with our fellow commissioners, I think that we should just send the idea whether we all agree with it or just some of us agree with it. I think it should go and let the, the supervisors see what our thoughts were. I'm, I'm afraid that what we're gonna end up is it's just gonna be a vote and somebody's thoughts aren't gonna get to the supervisors if we, if we vote on it. I think that we should, you know, if there's a point that, that somebody brings up, that's what we should send to the, the board of supervisors. See, go ahead.
That raises a, a bit of a, a difficult perspective, because one of the roles of the planning commission is to provide a recommendation to the, the supervisors. And if the commission were to provide a long list of everybody's kind of wish list, that's a wish list that doesn't really have a recommendation. So I would advocate that if you are going to formulate a motion to put, provide a letter to the board of supervisors, it be done by consensus at least.
Can we get that done tonight? I don't know.
I, I agree with the director on that.
Would you, Thomas? The rest of the commission all would agree with that sentiment that we're gonna throw stuff out there and then we're gonna decide.
It was my understanding that we were going to send our, you know, not just our collective recommendations and thoughts, but also just our individual summaries. But that was just my understanding.
That's more how I had, had.
Picture this being more important, saying, hey, we made some small changes here. But.
I can see meeting those sides.
So I, I, I think we should throw some things out there and then vote on them, or then we'll then get some public comment and then vote on them. So. Melanie's given some ideas. Who else would like to throw some ideas out there so that we can then open it up to public comment?
Can I go, Chair?
Go ahead. I'm not sure who was the next. Go ahead, Thomas.
I'm just, I really want to reiterate that there's literally less than 800 more applications under the rules. We have a set of rules in place. Not everyone loves them, but they are the rules that we all agreed upon. And the reason I say we all agreed upon them, because we agreed during the development of 2.0 not to change those rules. So I feel that we should honor those rules. I share concerns with the community as far as water. And I believe my, my belief is the work that the drought task force is going to be doing, it's going to be encouraging people to be storing water because I have this inkling that, you know, we are ahead on water, now we're behind on waters, water rainfall, that there's a good chance that there may be a curtailment unless people have X amount of gallons stored up for their cultivation in 2022. So I feel that the county has that protection in place with the language in the ordinance and the work that the drought task force is doing. So that's why I personally feel confident with the rules in place. And I feel that with the, with the generator noise, the condition of approval that was put in place of that project that did not go through, that was really great because it protected, you had Department of Fish and Wildlife concerned about noise. And it's like, hey, we're gonna approve you and you can't use your generator until you prove to us that it's under the 50 decibels. I think that's a good condition. I don't disagree with it. So that's, I think that we should probably, I really would like to see us work within the framework of the rules we have in place for the less than 800 applications. And possibly support conditions of approval such as the one that was before the project tonight, where they have to show that they're meeting that standard early on. That's kind of where I'm at.
Mike Newman?
Thanks, Chair. So this is my first bite at this. Any comments in that? I have to go along the same lines as what has been previously discussed. There might be a few small tweaks that maybe we can ask to recommend to the board of supervisors, but for the most part, I believe that we can, we should keep the 1.0 rules and the 2.0 as they are, as it was discussed, as people have planned for, as they have been working towards getting things together on the 1.0 applicants to come under, you know, the scrutiny of being in the law. And we've asked the sheriff, you know, to go after those that are not complying with the law, not giving permits and not doing that. So really, I would maybe urge the supervisors to ask the sheriff to really step that up, see if they can fund a little bit more that way with the non-compliant growers, especially those that are using those big generators and diverting water out of our watersheds that are causing a lot of havoc. That's why the law was passed by the majority of the voters in California, I believe, for some of those reasons is the environmental use, the coming out and coming under rules and laws, and then some taxation to then get those ones that are, are in compliance, that are doing that, that are, that are doing it to then go after those that are not, that are on the black market and try and get rid of that. It's gonna take some time. I know that. It, it's been taking time for us to go through here because of, you know, bodies at the planning department. I believe the director has done a, a great job at trying to ramp up as best as possible. But this, this is a hard thing to get all of this through. And I believe the goalposts should not be moved. They could be small, small tweaks. As I mentioned earlier today on that discussion on the permit, the only reason that we've gone with the conversion from generators to electricity or solar panel is because there's been agreement by the applicants. No other reason. If they weren't agreement, in agreement with any of those changes, I didn't hold that against them. And I don't think we should. All of those requirements in that permit, in that application were for the good of the people, the watersheds, the environment. So those are my thoughts at this point here. Thank you for the time.
Thanks, Nick. Thank you, Brian. You got a thoughts? Thank you Brian, you got thoughts?
My internet's not working for some reason. I keep cutting out stuff. I can see all you guys, but sometimes I can't hear you. I really want to support a cannabis industry that's financially successful and stable. For me, it's, it's hard because for forty years I've done projects and I've had to comply with NEPA and CEQA and this whole. Whole process of having a countywide environmental document is so foreign to anything that I've ever had to deal with because I've always had to look at. Impacts on a project by project basis. It's hard because I don't go out to all the sites. So, you know, I agree that roads are a huge impact. And I also understand that, you know, the, the cost to put in PG&E is more like a million dollars a mile. Because you're, when you're in a heavy forested area, you have a lot of costs just in, in tree cutting because they want to prevent fires. So I understand that, you know, they're not gonna have power and when someone comes in here and says, oh yeah, I am, I'm doubtful. So, but I do support, you know, an energy plan and that should be part of the application, whether it's a one point O or two point O. And, you know, moving away from a hundred percent generator, but I'm not naive. You need generators. I have a generator at my house that comes on if the power goes out. So I understand the use and need for generators. We operated with generators up river, you know, on the York Reservation almost exclusively because people didn't have a lot of choices and renewables are not. A hundred percent. You're gonna have to have two or three different sources of power to get by. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't have that goal and that would, you know, the areas that consistently come up and we all go back and forth about. Should be the ones that, that we have recommendations for, like the roads, like the, the renewable plan. You know, the wells, I've never really thought that that was the way to go because, you know, it's, it's. One, it's not good because your wells could fail for the, the operator, but I, I believe in the catchment, the water catchment. And again, you can have a plan that, that allows you to do both. But when I see us requiring something of one group and not another or another applicant. I, I don't think that's fair to them and, and it's, it just seems like we're going backwards. So I think that maybe if, if nothing else, we came up with that list of those items that we consistently seem to disagree about. I personally, just for those of you that bring it up, don't like the threats that if we don't do this, the whole world's gonna end and. You know, people are just gonna do everything illegally. People did things illegally for a long time, you know, since I've lived in Humboldt County. You know, there's been illegal grows and I think they'll continue to be illegal grows. So I don't like being threatened that if. You know, I need to change my opinion because they're gonna grow anyway. And I don't know why there's more. Generators now than there were before. Maybe that's even a better reason to, to put restrictions that, that bays out some of the generator use or maybe look into why that's the case. And, you know, I don't like the threats that, you know, you should vote this way because if you don't, then, then, you know, we're gonna get overturned or whatever. We're here to make a decision based on the facts that are put in front of us. And, you know, we should make that decision. If it's wrong, then we're wrong or if it's overturned, it's overturned. I'm not here to change one point O drastically or two point O. I, I don't, wouldn't want. The goalposts changed for me if I was working on a project. But I think that the one point O people compared to what I've had to deal with on projects have a pretty free rein and. You know, and just because they were, it's always kind of bothered me because you did something illegal in the past, we should support you. And those that are coming in who always followed the rules, you get hired goalposts. But I've dealt with it because that's the rules that were in place when I got here. I wasn't part of one point O or two point O. And so, you know, I don't always vote the way I vote. Sometimes I vote for things that probably I shouldn't. But, you know, and if I vote no, it's because I don't care if you're all gonna vote yes, it's still my opinion. And I think we should be entitled to that and not, you know, have to revisit things or go back or wait for another person to show up who. Who might tilt the vote in the other direction. I mean, we all have the opportunity to be here. Those are my thoughts. If we can't come to an agreement on everything, we should select those items that have risen to the top consistently and at least. Make some recommendations in those areas. And I think the ones that I've seen are roads. You know, this, this whole honor system of, oh yeah, go get a road association and hope that you can come up with something is a little weak. On the road department and I really do think that roads have some of the most major impacts. To the environment and the community that they surround. And, you know, I think we should always. Take into consideration the community where these grows are going into place. If we have a grove or a business that the whole community doesn't want or a lot of the, you know, then we should honor that. They, they're property owners, they're county residents and, and, you know, they shouldn't have their world turned upside down because we want to support one more permit. But I'm for moving forward with the eight hundred and either they get approved or they don't get approved. I, I would veer away from wells as much as possible. I think that they would be smart to do the same thing because wells fail. And if they fail and you need water, then you're not gonna, you know, be successful if you don't have any catchment water or an alternative.
Thank you Peggy. So I didn't really get one thing out of that that I heard that, you know. You're concerned with generators and with wells. Is there one recommendation out of all that that you might wanna have as?
I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is I think if we narrow down the list. And work together, my opinion is my opinion, but if we have to come to consensus on something. If we narrow down the list to those items like wells, roads, generators. And come up with some agreement on those, it should be by consensus. And if I'm not in the majority, then I'm not in the majority, but I think that, you know, we can't change the whole ordinance. I don't know if anyone's that scared.
I agree. I just thought maybe there was one you wanted to pick, kind of trying to narrow it down so that when we come back and.
I probably have three and that would be roads, it would be the, the wells and it would be the generators or the renewable energy plan.
Alright.
Well, to be fair, those are all things that would pretty much go away with everyone being under two point O.
We'll come back and we'll have the argument about everything. Let's get through our wish list and then open this up for public and then come back and. Narrow it and come up with something that we can actually get done tonight. So Thomas, I see your hand back up. Go ahead.
Yes, so when I hear comments that are inconsistent, I have to speak and I apologize for that. Not all operators were in violation of the law pre-two thousand and sixteen. There was this thing called Proposition two fifteen and many cultivators had collectives and had members and they provided. Cannabis medicine all over the state of California direct to the patients. So some were not doing that, but I think we can't lump everyone in one. As far as the generator clause, what I said, those are not going to permitted grows. Those are going to power up hundred to three hundred lighters. That's what they're doing. So we have lots of forested area that, you know, we have within the county that it's great to build some brush huts as they're called. As far as the generator use, I think I would be able to make. Can, I don't know, consensus to try to mitigate some of the other commissioners' concerns in regards to generators. That the condition of approval that was in that project earlier, if the applicant needs to show write off within thirty days or within beginning. Before they can use a generator, something like that, that it's meets the standards within our ordinance. Then I don't think that would possibly be doing anything over burdensome because in theory it should be meeting those standards right now, operating under the interim permit. But that's somewhat of a gray area. And as far as the wells, I'm in support of using wells because I have this belief that the drought task force is going to come back with some. Pretty good information that's going to. When we have dry years, drought years, instead of the commission being impacted by decisions of how much water storage. The cultivator will be impacted by the decision of how long they want to cultivate with the drought task force mitigation measures they put in place. That's part of the existing ordinance. And that's where I would kind of like to lean us towards having faith in that.
Brian, you have anything you'd like to chime in?
So I guess I come down agreeing with a little bit of what each of my fellow commissioners has said tonight. And I know that's not a helpful statement to make. I could certainly see the value in, in asking for the supervisors to give us clarification. On the things that we spend the most time debating, such as water storage, water sources. Generator use and roads to start out with. And ask either for their permission to develop further like guidelines to give out. So that everybody knows what extra conditions they're going to get upfront. Or they can tell us, no, you don't have our permission to, to add those and, and therefore we're getting their guidance on. On not adding additional conditions, but. Yeah, that's where I'm at in a nutshell.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that leaves me tonight, so I'll try and keep it quick so we can get to public. You guys all know my issue. I thought a lot since the last meeting. Some great points were brought up in opposition to what my thought was to. About roads last time. Thomas Mulder had some great points. I thought the, the points brought up by, in some of the supplementals, the. Margot growers had some great points, so I rethought my position on it. My issue is that we've come up, well, not we, Public Works. And I, I, I just, I still can't fathom how they could do this, but they came up with a one-page form where you check the box and. And it makes everything good. So what I'm gonna suggest is we make a, a recommendation to the supervisors. They get rid of that ridiculous form. They make it if it's not a county road that a engineer is involved. We did this on other projects. I'll give the example of when we did reggae on the river, we made it a stipulation that they had to have an engineer sign off on that bridge. That all those vehicles were gonna cross the Yale River on, get over to that campsite or to the, the event site. So the point is, we're given a special treatment to cannabis. That's rubbed me wrong from the start. I say we get rid of, we ask supervisors to get rid of that. Make it a more level playing field. It's not gonna be even close to, to, to equal to what you would have to do in the real world, but it's getting better. So my recommendation would be that. Or I have a second alternative. If the county wants to, to play stupid games and come up with stupid. One page where you check a box, let them take the liability for that road because there is gonna be a consequence down the road at some point. There's gonna be a truck that flips over. There's gonna be something, somebody's gonna get killed on one of these roads. Let them take the liability. So let them take the road over, let them take the responsibility for it. So when that happens, there won't be any question who said it was okay to do that. You know, that's why the, the county on everything makes you go and have an engineer sign off because when he puts that stamp on, guess what? He just took responsibility for it. Now, we all know which option that they would take. They'd make you have an engineer do it. The county's never gonna take responsibility for anything, any department. Because county legal counsel will tell them, you can't do that. But right now, we have did, by allowing this to go on, it is, it has not been fair to the public. Because we have been allowing something that would never happen in any other circumstance to happen because it's cannabis. And that needs to go away, needs to be treated. And I was all for, you know, remember, we're gonna bring this into the real world. So that's, the real world is you have an engineer. Or somebody takes responsibility for it. And so those are my, my two thoughts on the road issue. We either make the, the county be responsible for it or you have somebody that is willing to put their professional stamp. And their errors and omissions insurance to cover it. So that would be my recommendation. Thomas, I see you got your hand up. So go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, you're asking for an engineer to sign off, but I didn't hear a functional equivalent of a category four, a category three, a category two, or a functional equivalent of a driveway?
We've, we've already decided that it, our staff has already decided that, that the standard should be a class four road. So that's what I would, I'm, I'm not saying to change what is required. I'm just saying that somebody needs to put their ass on the line to say it is. And, and we all know that you can go put a stack of twenties in certain engineers' hands and they'll, they'll sign off whatever. But the real ones won't do that. The ones that are reputable and, and care about things won't do that. But if there's people that are willing to do that, let them do that too. Somebody needs to take responsibility. Looking the other way and coming up with a stupid box that you check is not the way to, to protect the public. And this is all about protecting the public. Okay, because somebody's gonna get hurt, some river's gonna get filled with, with a truckload of diesel, something's gonna happen. It's just a matter of time. I'm not wishing for it. I, I know it maybe comes across that way. I'm trying to prevent it from happening. There's a lot of things that have rubbed me wrong. I just narrowed it down to this is one of the really key issues that I think is just flat out wrong in the ordinance. In both, in, in the whole, everything, you know. It was, I brought it up when we were talking about the ordinances and, you know, that, that, but. It seems that the only time the county takes notice of anything, they've decided the trains left the station, we're pushing this thing. Is when somebody makes the threat of litigation. You know, all of a sudden we're real concerned with wells once somebody ponied up and a lawyer wrote a letter. So maybe, you know, that's what it's gonna take to get the road issue dealt with. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not a litigious person. I'm not trying to get that to happen, but I'm trying to prevent that from happening in the long run. Okay, I listened to what you had to say about, you know, people moved every, and spent everything they had to get out there. Okay. I don't agree with it should be out there, but, you know, you made other points about that it's certain elevations and this, that. I don't know about all that stuff that, you know, certain strains grow here and that kind of thing. I'm willing to come your way and that's what you said you needed to see. I'm willing to say, hey, okay, I. I don't think they should be out there at all, but I'm willing to say, okay, if you do, you know, A, B, and C, you get that. But checking a box doesn't cut it for me. And, and whoever, well, I know who came up with it, he should be embarrassed by it. It's, it's, it's below what he went to school for. Let's put it that way. So I'm not gonna.
I share your concerns Chair about roads and I would like to see more for the fire safety, the ingress and egress of. Emergency vehicles in the event of a catastrophic event. And I think that would be in lines with protecting the public health and safety, but also as the video I did show you. That doesn't provide ingress and egress and there's petroleum products.
There are, but they're, they're way different scale, okay? Somebody goes to those, those cell sites occasionally, but it's not on a daily basis. It's not at the, the level that these commercial projects are taking place. I would agree and in some respects, those, those locations, those towers have to be to be able to provide the service. I'm not saying that condones having a less than standard road. Maybe as those, those issues come up, that needs to be something that we address more. I, I, I'm not arguing with you on that, but it's not the same thing. It's not, it's the, the, I, I have property that has two cell towers on it, as I told you. And I know how often they're there because one of the things we do is make them provide us every time they come, proof of insurance to be on our property. So I know exactly when they're there and it's not that often. Okay?
I hear you, I hear you there. What I was saying in, in the fire safety, that specific one I sent you a video of doesn't have the proper turnaround. And there's petroleum products stored at that site. So as a neighboring landowner, that's what I'm concerned is there isn't the ability in the event of a. Catastrophic fuel loss or a fire to properly protect, contain that fire within that structure to not spread to other properties, neighboring properties. So that's where I could share some shared values with you as far as fire safety. And I don't know if staff can maybe, I believe we have rules within that meet fire safety, but maybe what you're asking for is an engineer to sign off on that. And that's, I don't believe it's a category four road that we're looking to have an engineer sign off, but maybe the equivalent of a driveway or. Functional equivalent of, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm trying to find out so then we can have a, but we're all talking. but we're all talking about the same thing.
I just, once again, I think they're, they're different kind of projects that you know, there's not people living out at those sites and, and you know, they're on a daily basis. It's a, it's an intermittent thing. And, and they do have to go out there, but it's usually one or two people going out, you know, to just check on things, maybe upgrade something. You know, I, I, I do feel your concerns and I get that. I just don't think it's on the, the same level as the, the cannabis industry and the amount of, of, you know, big trucks that are going in and out, as well as the, the number of trips. So I don't want to get, go back and forth. We've all brought up some really good points. That was the idea of this. I think we should open this up for public comment, take that in, and then we should try and, and come up with a consensus of what those key items are and have a vote on that and send that to the the board supervisors. So you guys are okay with that? I'd like to open it up for public comment, and then we'll come back and have some more discussion and hopefully we can, you know, come up with a few key ideas. Sound good?
Great.
All right. That's where we're going. Thank you. So imagine who is our number one caller, Mr. Sawatsky. Go ahead. You there, Kent?
Hello, can the commission hear me?
Yes.
I, I'm going to make a comment. I'm going to make a comment right now. Mr. Mulder, there's a chance with these revisions that are coming forward that your entitlements might be revoked or changed or altered. And you have a conflict of interest. You should not be participating. You should not have participated in this conversation from the get-go. And so any participation you do further is, is a public perception, not only amongst me, but amongst your fellow commissioners possibly, that you should not be participating in this thing because it could have a financial benefit or negative impact on your life. So I'm asking you to cease to communicate on this particular topic. And I'm not aware of anybody else who has that kind of a conflict here. But if there's anybody else who might be impacted by this, then they should not participate either. That's a public perception. That's all it takes to have a conflict of interest. This bill of goods that was sold to us was that we were going to move this stuff out of Mr. Mulder's neighborhoods and out of the woods and put it back where it belonged in other areas, and that's not happened. It's totally appropriate for you folks to change everything and go back to what was originally sold to the people of Humboldt County, which was to get it out of the woods without the impact, without having places where this was growing, without having PG&E power, without having water, without having all the amenities that a normal farm would have. There's no tomatoes that have been growing up on these sites that I'm aware of commercially before people keep going tomatoes to this. And that's why this will end up in litigation, and that's why people will lose their entitlements. And we, since we have to do it through the legal process, and I know it just irritates people here, threat of litigation, but that's what it takes sometimes, apparently, to get the point across that there's been a bait and switch. And that you folks should be going back to the original intent, which was to use every power you have to get it out of the woods. And that's not where these commercial ventures belong. They don't belong now. They never did. And fortunately, the market's going to go ahead and crash down below the tax, which is 162,000 or whatever, talking to John Ford, I can't remember the exact figure, per pound. It'll be below that pretty soon. And then, of course, all we have is you people out there with permits growing in the black market. I'm not saying Mr. Mulder is, but a high percentage of the people out there under these permits are growing and selling black market because they can't afford to do anything else. It's just a real travesty to, to nature. It's a travesty to Mother Nature. It's extremely irritating, and that's why litigation self-follow, and we shall correct this through environmental groups, the same as Rolling Meadows. And we shall move, and, and just basically dismantle what's already been dismantled by, by the market. So thank you for my opportunity to speak and good luck. And Mr. Mulder, I hope I don't hear from you anymore on this topic because total conflict of interest. Please be quiet.
Thank you, Kent. Next caller.
Can I get a point of order there, Chair?
I'd rather go through the public and then we can talk, talk back, but I'll let, go ahead. Go ahead.
A point, a point of order is I do not feel that there's any conflict of interest. I have two projects that have been approved. I'm less than one mile from a county road. My road meets category four standards. I have more than seventy-five, or it's about sixty percent of my annual water usage is in storage. All of the comments that you guys are talking about, my projects meet that, and it's in the process of getting PG&E hooked to the site. So.
I don't think that's what he means by a conflict. He means you have a conflict in that you're acting on this and you're in the industry. That's what he's talking about.
Have you, have you did, I, I know, I'm just saying there's been many a builders that are part of general plan updates that would.
Absolutely. That's my, I, yes, I agree. You could ask legal counsel to chime in. We could have, you know, that, but it's kind of getting off the point. I don't believe you, you do have a conflict unless it's a project that you are working on or you're representative on or something like that. All right. Public six, two, two, eight.
Good evening, Commissioners, Natalie. Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Melanie.
Okay, perfect. Natalie, it's CGA. I have a question. Do we know how many category category four equivalent roads are currently maintained by the county? And is there a plan to upgrade all of the county's roads that are not category four equivalent? Because if we're so concerned about the safety of humans that drive around on these roads and that the only way of ensuring safety is that they're a category four road, I mean, I would start with the county first before pointing fingers at existing cultivators. To Mr. Sawatsky's last comments, the goal was not to bring farms out of the hills, except for with the triple R program. Otherwise, the goal of the first ordinance was to bring pre-existing operators into compliance with the land use ordinance. I was there, as was Mr. Bongio and Commissioner Levy as part of those processes, along with dozens of other people, environmental organizations, and I don't believe that Kent was there during those conversations, and maybe he should have been back in 2015. You know, if our goal is to bring these operators into compliance, and I also, Melanie, I have to make a comment about something that you said related to race. And it really blew my mind, and I think it was frankly inappropriate. And so I encourage you not to bring race into discussions around land use. All of these operators that are existing under interim permits are following a wide variety of compliance agreements to keep them doing better than what they were before. Folks, if you don't like generators as a part of the project, like maybe the cultivation method can be downgraded from a high-intensity mixed light to a lower-intensity mixed light, or even outdoor with light depth. There are other ways to get around fossil fuel use. You know, I, I'm encouraged by what the county is doing around the groundwater studies. And I think that we are moving in the right direction with increased water storage. And, you know, frankly, these conversations that keep coming up from the public around threats of litigation, that the only way that we're all going to understand is by punishing is just also really inappropriate. You know, I, I think I'm just going to leave it at that. Oh, the last thing I do want to say is I'm, I'm pleased by what Planning Director Ford talked about with the night sky enforcement. Because that has been an issue, and I do think that it will help improve community relations. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Sue Moore.
Hi, this is her husband, Jim. And this may be sort of an academic point. But the, the metaphor, the metaphor, moving the goalposts has come up quite a bit. And that comes from sports like hockey, where you can actually physically move the goalposts in order to, to gain an unfair advantage. And the reason that it's unfair is because it's, the sport is extremely well-established. Everybody knows exactly what's going on. You know, decades, if not centuries, of people playing them according to a fixed set of rules. And listening to all of this, it's just really clear that, that all of the county, you and everybody else, are in the process of designing a new sport, if you will. And so you're, you're, you're negotiating where the goalposts ought to be. Of course, they have, you know, that, that's a process. And to pick a point in time arbitrarily and say, well, this is, this is fixed and we have to stop, when it takes years for the cumulative impacts of different decisions to be detected and then discussed and debated, and we're hearing that tonight. So I just, I just really strongly feel that this prejudice against quote-unquote moving the goalposts is quite, it's inappropriate, it's premature. In, in twenty years from now, if you change the rules with respect to a particular grower, then yeah, that'll be moving the goalposts and it'll be wrong. But right now, you're, you're, you're figuring out where the goalposts ought to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, good comments.
Next caller is Vanessa Valari.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Vanessa. I'm a 1.0 applicant. I'm a woman and I am the only grower at my property. I have a small 2,000 square foot grow. And I'm not over the finish line yet. It is no fault of my own. I've done everything asked of me. At this point, I thought I was going to be done, but I have a will. And so I'm now held up again. My permit should have already been approved, as many of the other 1.0s. However, we were placed to the side, so 2.0 applicants could go through because we had interim permits and could cultivate. And so at this point, to make us have to do more things when we already have had to do more things, we have to do maps, redo lots of stuff. It's, it's just, it's a tax. It's more of a tax. When we've already paid a lot of taxes. I'd actually like to know how much we paid in taxes total in Humboldt County as cultivators and distributors and everything else, because the state of California said it collected $1 billion in the last year. I also have a small consulting firm and I represent thirty clients. And only about fifty percent of those clients are over the finish line for the same reasons that we were put to the side for 2.0 applicants to go further because they could not cultivate. I feel like if the rules change now, it's just going to really make it hard for all of us to even begin to continue moving forward. Due to the fact that the industry is changing, there are a lot of players in the marketplace. The market has changed. The amount of money available has changed, however, our taxes have not. Also, I also wanted to point out that you're not the only agency or hurdle I have to get across. Once I get across your hurdle, and while I'm getting across your hurdle, I also have CDFW, Cal Fire, two departments from the Water Board, State and Regional. I have Cal Cannabis and the Bureau of Cannabis Control. I have the Humboldt County Ag Department, California Tax and Fee Administration, METRIC, and they all require reporting and mitigation measures every year constantly. This is not an easy process, 1.0 or 2.0. And these things that we're all discussing, while they are important, I think the more important thing here is that we are a huge industry in Humboldt County, and our tax dollars are important. And to maintain the small amount we have left, because a lot of people aren't jumping in, I think is the most crucial thing for us right now, to maintain our legacy and our heritage and our tax dollars.
Thirty seconds. Thank you.
I'm just saying.
Stephen Lou. Stephen Lou.
Hello, I'd like to make a, just as a member of the public, just some informational things about road evaluations that an engineer would do. The engineer would reference the ASHTO standards for a very low-traffic road with less than 400 car vehicles per day. And when you go, when you get into that level of review for these remote sites, they're just looking for any evidence of collisions or dangerous sections. So, you, you know, the, it would not be a category four equivalent. That's what that checklist is for. Not that I don't disagree that, you know, there needs to be some detailed analysis, but the, the requirements of a 2.0 for that, for, to, to require all these remote sites that enter the process under 1.0 to commit the amount of money it would require to get to these remote properties is considerable. And folks applied under this 1.0 ordinance expecting to get through with the information that was made public and available at that time. So it, you're changing, you know, moving the goalposts. I understand that from a, from a public safety standard, but these were 1.0 pre-existing operating sites. And that was the basis of the 1.0 ordinance, was to make, set a baseline and make things better. And to increase any kind of funding, any kind of a further burden on these 1.0 applicants that have been waiting for years and years to get their permits. This, it seems improper to me. And as far as the public commenting that there will be litigation, that seems like something that an applicant would, would be able to litigate also. So I just want to make that point. I, and, and that goes down the line with respect to mandating that 1.0 applicants lose their surface water diversions when other counties and other communities allow them, the state allows them, CDFW allows them. And I'm curious as to why that was prohibited in the first place. And it could be because the ordinance was passed in 2018, and the cannabis SIUR and the updated water board policy did not come out until the year afterwards. So if we are going to reopen this, one of these revisions, I would request that we relook at potentially allowing surface water diversions as part of 2.0 application, or as part of the amended ordinance in compliance of state law, CDFW and water regulations, and also what other communities and counties are allowing. Thank you.
Public nine, eight, three, one. Nine, eight, three, one, are you there? Okay, seeing nobody. Next one is Margot Advisors. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is Kelly Flores from Margot Advisors. Commissioners and especially Commissioner McCaver, if you have not had an opportunity to review the 1.0 versus 2.0 chart that we provided to the clerk, I'll summarize some key observations. Those in TPZ zones approved under 1.0 would be disqualified. Those in the hills, where a fifteen percent or more slope is common, would be disqualified. Those in now identified impacted watersheds would be disqualified. Those too far from a county road may be disqualified. And those who remain would be subject to tens of thousands of dollars of additional reporting and surveying costs, which do not recognize the improvements that have been made on so many of these sites over the past five years. And to provide some real examples for you, I'd like the Commission to consider Huckleberry Hill Farms, which is a supplier to Willie Nelson's Willie Reserve brand. They have been an outspoken advocate of sustainable farming and even provide tours to visitors to educate them on sustainable practices. Under 2.0, Huckleberry Hill Farms would be disqualified from the legal market. Another example is Moon Maid Farms. This farm is dedicated to regenerative practices. It's sun and earth certified. It's DEM pure certified. It's been recognized for the fact that they contribute more to the environment than they take. Under 2.0 requirements, Moon Maid Farms would be disqualified because their farm exists in the hills of Southern Humboldt, where the general area is above fifteen percent slope. These are important considerations to make as you look at this process. And I have to ask, how would it benefit the county more to disqualify these 1.0 applicants? In conclusion, I just request that the Commission not propose broad recommendations with potentially harsh consequences, but rather take Director Ford's advice that what's provided, what he provided in the last meeting, focus on specific identifiable issues. And if possible, we ask that you look for solutions that provide benefits to both the county and the cannabis community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Mika Cook. Go ahead, Mika.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Mika Cook. I.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm like Vanessa, I have my own farm and some clients that I'm helping get through the process and through no fault of my own, and still in the 1.0 phase. And I was hoping to be one of the people that was hoping to go to. And I was hoping to be one of the people that's hoping to go to hearing by for the end of the year, like a number of my clients. And I just wanted to point out that if whatever changes may happen to the goalpost has a significant impact on the, what needs to be done to process the permits and thus time that the county has to spend, that the clients or applicants are billed for, and most people, considering the state of the industry right now, are really and have done, written these COPs, made these site maps to meet the current standards and are sitting, waiting in line to go to hearing while this well issue is negotiated, and more billable hours for the county and for the consultants is not, is a serious inconvenience to people that have been waiting so long for, to get through, especially ones that were told, I have a client that was told earlier this year that all we needed to do was drill a well and then he would get his permit processed. And as soon as he had the well driller out there, that was the day that the regulations changed and then all the site lack and site maps and COP work we done had to be adjusted. And so that already put him behind and now again, he is behind again. And then I also wanted to bring up the road maintenance issue, and I think that it is a serious, significant issue and the Planning Commission or the Planning Department should come up with some way to deal with the fact that there are people that have gotten their permits years ago, 1.0 applicants that are, have combined agreements that mandate they do all the roadwork on their road, while there's people on their road that are in 2.0 or 1.0 that are on interim permits that have no obligation to do that work yet. And so finding a way to get all applicants that share a road to be working together and maybe rather than creating it as a part of 1.0 or 2.0 entirely separate system or process that manage road associations together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Mary Gott. Go ahead, Mary.
Good evening, thanks for letting me speak. I think it all comes down to a question of carrying capacity, of how much watersheds and infrastructure can sustain. And, you know, I'd really like the question of scale to be considered. And throughout this entire process, there's the idea of existing operations. And the scale that has been approved is far vaster than what truly was existing. And so I think there's a real fallacy around how impacts are not as much or equivalent to what they were before, when cultivation cycles are three and four times a year and you're having 40, 50 employees commute to places where no, there was not such intensive land use prior. I think that really needs to be considered in all of this. And I am a small cultivator myself. I've gone through 1.0. It'll be six years in the middle of this month that I've been in the process. So trust me, I know what it takes to get through it. And I would like to say that Rolling Meadow Ranch was approved under 1.0. It is not existing, there is nothing existing there. And it really, that fallacy needs to be blown out of the water because intensive land use of the type that's being allowed is not appropriate for the site and setting that it's being approved for. Also, after conditions of approval are set for a project, would be really nice that they weren't changed on the whim afterwards, because it renders the entire process kind of meaningless if projects are modified after the fact. I think that should be a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that when substantial project design changes happen after a diversion from the plan, as it was written, revised, publicly discussed and approved, that makes the whole process meaningless. Thank you.
Next caller, Bonnie.
Hi, thank you. I want to agree with, I think that this whole process, things are changing. One of the previous callers had said something about, you know, it's like 1.0 wasn't, that wasn't just going to be it. So things have changed, we've got to 2.0. And I believe there needs to be some more changes. Certain things have happened with the climate change and the drought and then where all these places are being permitted. And I agree with the previous caller that, you know, this idea of these places were pre-existing at the level that they're being permitted is just not true at all. Maybe a few of them, but all the ones I see are like a lot more going on, so much more of an impact. I think looking at the water, the water source and storage, that there could be changes in that. And the generators, I don't think anybody was thinking that they were going to be permitting 24 hours a day of generator use for these growths. And so I think that, that looking at that and pressing for renewables. Yeah, and the whole thing with the roads and the category four is just, you know, when there's suppliers, some emergency, there's going to be some real big problems with roads that are calling functionally equivalent. And the bottom line is protecting our environment and our public safety.
Hello, thank you, apologies for earlier, I couldn't get to the buttons fast enough. This is Holly, I'm calling from Breslin. Thank you for taking my phone call. I want to say that I'm discouraged that we're having this conversation again. We all have other things, as the last caller pointed out, we could be looking at our climate action plan, which I've asked the commission, you know, I hate to be kind of that harping voice, but every time these conversations have come up, I've asked you to call that up from the staff. I know that that is in action and I'm wondering if that would be an appropriate place to focus some energies that would look at community, countywide environmental impacts and solutions that are not focused solely on one industry and not so discouraging. Part of what's discouraging, as many other people have said, is that there have been a six-year process where people were encouraged, there was a lot of carrots and, or a lot of talk about carrots, even if those carrots weren't actually visible yet. And so it feels discouraging to me that we're using more of our county's time, our staff's time, to continue to have these conversations, as well as all the people on this call tonight, including the commission. I also am curious if county council is listening in tonight and what the, if there's been any tap into whether or not, I hate to say it like this, but is this legal? Like, I know the permits that are vested, that are gone through a discretionary process review have a different standing. Changing the laws before something is fully reviewed has some different availability for changes. I also want to encourage the Planning Commission to look at the conversations, if you weren't present in the 2.0 drafting, and look at the specific language around modifications is one where modification now will move people into a 2.0 project if it's a substantial enough change. And that does bring, if people want to make a substantial enough change to make a modification, and if you need help with understanding what those are, I would ask you to reach out to your Planning Commission staff about what that means. So that process is already there. I also want to encourage you to look at other agencies, the Fire Safety Council can deal, is dealing and looking at increasing regulations. And generators are already being dealt with through the DCC. And when you're talking about equity, like there's another program there, so if you want to have input on those programs, go put public comment in, as any citizen can. But I'm going to ask you to stay with what you have. We've gone through this process, we've put hours and hours and years into these applications and the ordinance themselves, the multiple versions of them.
Time's up. Thank you. Next caller, Lilia Maranova. And no, we're going to go on to the next one. Allison Rivas.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. I just want to speak to, oh my gosh, there's so much to speak to. I just want, I want to speak to, so I am a 1.0 applicant, I've had my permit approved. I am a female owner, Latin API heritage. I do think that we should equity into those programs that are available there, but I just would say that for all those who think that it was kind of a reward to come in under 1.0, I would say that it was pure, it was really dedication. And that the Planning Department in all of our county has done such an incredible lift to be able to get us all here. We have really rigorous environmental reviews. Personally, since being interim permitted since 2016, I've, my business has contributed to county taxes in the amount of $100,000 and state cultivation taxes in 2020 alone was about 300. So I just, I know so many other farmers that I work with in my other consulting business too, and there's just incredible farms that are doing the right thing and taking care of land. I personally cleaned up over 600 yards of flash pile and debris and a lot of the damage that was done really was from the pre- timber operations that I worked in hand with fish and wildlife and both state and regional water boards. I've made significant investments into the land and the forest health and understanding what that means to implement. Now completed every single mitigation requirement and I will continue to do so when I am not alone with the farmers who are standing strong for really taking care of this land. We worked hand in hand with CAL FIRE, done a ton of road improvements. And I would challenge who else could be coming into these lands. I'm a TPZ, so if 1.0 was for 2.0, I would, I would lose the permit and all this improvement. And we're just supposed to challenge if who else is better suited at this point to take care of these lands that we, that we live and grow with. Thank you.
There's nobody there. All right.
Good evening. Good evening, planning commissioners, can you hear me?
Yep, go.
Hi, this is Leslie Doyle calling in with Elevated Solutions. I also own my own farm out in Bloxburg, California. I'd like to make a few comments tonight in regards to the standards that you would like to change with the, and give advice to the supervisors in order to do so. As far as road standards go, the Planning Department staff requires proof of documentation and evidence that the road is a category four when you are self-reporting. They require photos of the roadway with turnouts and also the culvert system for those roadways. Also, generator use should be allowed in some aspects for backup only and to charge batteries on solar systems when there are difficulties keeping batteries charged. I don't feel that the Planning Commission should move the goalpost fully, but I understand that there are some needs for some regulations to be put in place to protect some unforeseen issues with the original ordinance. I also would like to make it known that there have been multiple meetings in which my personal project has been on the agenda. We have over 600,000 gallons in water storage for a 12,000 square foot outdoor cultivation. And we do have a well that we use, that we forbear during the summer months. And we have been pushed back to an unknown date for our hearing, in which we've waited years to get on the agenda for. I would just like to have the Planning Commission take into consideration the effects that you're having and the backlog that we're having now on projects because of the issue with the well. Thank you for hearing my comment tonight, and I hope that you consider some of those recommendations.
Thank you. Okay, there's one other last caller, and there's a technical reason that we have to vote her to be like she's on the commission, it's Lilia Maranova, so we're going to close the public comment, but I'm going to move her over to have her public comment at like she's part of the commission, and then it'll be closed after her. So go ahead, Lilia, if you can, we're trying to make it happen. Okay, I don't know, for some reason we can't get it. I apologize, I'm trying to make it happen, but unmute, see if you can. You're there, but star six, unmute. All right, I'm going to close the public comment. Apologize that we couldn't make it happen, but it's just a glitch, it's, I don't know what. Well, no, I already closed it, so it's, we're done with public comment. I'm bringing this back to the commission. We've got basically a half hour to get this done. So my suggestion is make some point, the points that we think are the most important and vote on them. Go ahead, Thomas.
So being as there's personal attacks on me, I'm just going to remind the commission, I don't feel that there's any conflict. I look at the agenda item, it's cannabis discussion, the Planning Commission intends to discuss issues surrounding cannabis permitting with the potential to provide a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. As I stated, I have two projects that have been approved and there, then there's one other project that has not been approved, it does not, has city water PG&E, and it's literally barely even from a county road, not even a half a mile, I think it's like a quarter, less than a quarter of a mile. So I don't think that any of these discussions are any financial gain to me, and that's why I'm participating in them. Just like a developer would be participating in a general plan, just like every single person on the commission could be potentially future applicants, but at this exact time, it is not financially gaining me, and that's why I'm participating.
Thank you, Thomas. All right. So my thought would be that we go down the order that we spoke and, you know, talk about the key issues that were brought up, and then say, is that something we want to send to the supervisors or not? I kind of picked out on each person, I put a recommendation by things that were brought up, or does anybody have a different idea? Melanie, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just, as you know, my main one that I've been bringing up for well years is just to have those maps. So the past, present, and reasonably foreseeable future projects, all on a map.
That's done.
Look at cumulative.
It's done, right? They're coming, right?
Okay.
He's saying they're on their way.
That is wonderful, that is.
I promise you, I will stay on them to make sure it happens, so.
Great.
He's smiling.
And yeah, that's wonderful. And other than that, I, you know, I'm open to whatever the other commissioners would like to do. I feel like what we've been doing and just recommending, adding a few conditions here and there in terms of updating, you know, I agree, it's not really moving the goalpost, it's adapting to changing conditions, when it's little things like solar generators, it is okay. And I don't think we need to do anything above and beyond that if other commissioners don't wish to do that.
Why don't we just tackle, you just brought up an issue right there, solar generators. Why don't we, why don't we tackle the generator issue right off the bat?
Right.
And do we want to make a recommendation about generators to?
Yeah. And that does seem though, to be the one that we all do agree on, for sure.
Okay, so anybody want to make a recommendation on what that we might recommend to change? A specific, just something?
So first of all, Chairman, I guess I just want to reiterate a, a point that I'm concerned about, which is we haven't been asked by the board of supervisors to bring forward a, a series of recommendations. This is sort of our initiative. And I feel like the letter should be more asking. We see, or we spend an, an ordinary amount of time debating these issues. We would like your direction and allow us to work on providing you specific recommendations on how to approve our process and the, and the regulations in the following areas and get them to direct us to work on that before we try to come up with consensus positions on stuff that we don't even know that they want us to be working on.
What's the rest of the board feel like on that?
Well, I don't think that we're trying to come up with consensus positions. We're trying to come up with a list of things. And I'm in agreement with Brian to put those things forth to the board of supervisors as to what we've been encountering and, and a possibility of something that could be looked at as a recommendation there, but yet besides just putting it forth, we do need to have a reason that we're recommending they look at this.
Well, my, my take on it is that, you know, we, we are discretionary. And in that sense, you know, we could continue to put on these conditions every couple of weeks and then they can, you know, they, they can be contested to the board of supervisors or not. And so I don't feel like we're overstepping anything by, you know, making recommendations as to what the board of supervisors might wish to codify in some sense that we happen to choose as conditions frequently. But, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that it really matters one way or the other, how we word it either. So I'm happy to go either way on that one.
It's just two different ways of going about it. If they don't like what we propose, they're going to say no. There's a pretty good chance that that's probably what will happen. Okay, but I, I don't think it's, I, I mean, is there a consensus? I'd say by, just put your hand up, that we should ask permission of the board, as Brian's saying, to have a discussion on these issues. I, I think it's, it's our right, there are things that are reoccurring that, that it's our right to say, hey, these are issues that just keep coming up. We think we should look at these. So, I mean, I, I don't think that we have to ask their permission. They'll tell us if they don't, nope, we're going with the way it is or yeah, that's a good idea to, to make that tweet. You know, I, I don't, I think we're overthinking this thing. This is supposed you know, it, it, to me, common sense says every two weeks, we have the same discussion that we want to, to, to debate the same thing over and over. Let's get some direction from them as to where we should go with that, that discussion.
How you're wording it, Alan, is, is exactly what I'm suggesting that we do. As opposed to saying, here's just a letter that says, we think that we should change the policy for generators from what you all approved to this other thing. And so the way you explained what the letter would be is, is not inconsistent with what I'm thinking.
Right.
Okay, so.
So using generators there, Chair? Cause you asked, since we were on that discussion there, what suggestions maybe we should do? I think like on this pro, this project that was put off to next meeting, having the 50 decibel level met as part of the CDW's recommendations ahead of their permit being issued should be something that is something recommended, that is looked at as a possibility there, but
Already in the order.
Right. Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that what we've been asking above and beyond is that they shift to solar by 2025.
So there'd be something we could ask them that we recommend that, you know, we, we include in every one of these that when they don't have, that they're going to do it, that that be a stipulation by that time. Thomas, go ahead.
So, I feel that what Commissioner Newman was saying, yes, it's already in the order, but that condition said that the applicant had to demonstrate that they were meeting that condition, or meeting that part of the ordinance before they could actually use the generator, before it was approved. And that's something I would, if there was a condition of approval for say, we approved a project and they use a generator, well, within 30 days or within whatever it would be, in a timely manner, they show that they're meeting that 50 decibel limit. I, I feel really uncomfortable making, I, I feel very uncomfortable making the statement of let's put them to solar by 2025. I could see we're having problems around generator use. The ordinance says generator use is allowed. Do you have any guidance for us? And they could say, follow the ordinance or come up with ideas. I think the other thing, when we talk about generators, maybe we need to differentiate not all generators, but generators under 50 horsepower. A household can run a generator without breaking any environmental laws, a generator under 50 horsepower 24/7 and not have to sign up for anything, but over 50 horsepower. That's where maybe we could have some discussions about energy use and, and power use, because that's something you have to, you have to register that with North Coast Air Quality Management District and there's other stipulations and also there's some guidelines. Now, DCC is trying to make you run tier four motors if you're over 50 horsepower. So I think can we differentiate generators between 50 horsepower and above and 50 horsepower and below? I mean, you might
I think that is entirely too granular. When we're just trying to bring up the topic of generator usage and whether or not we should develop better guidelines and a standard set of requirements for it. I thi, I think to go to that level of granularity is too premature.
Okay.
Oh, we not want, then we don't want to say, ask the supervisors to look at anything about generators?
I think that we should not limit what people use as a renewable energy source because, you know, just saying you have to go to solar should not be, I mean, some people can do a hydro system, some people can do wind, where they might need to do all of the above. But there should be a, an, an energy plan and we don't have to hire big, you know, consulting firms to do that, but a plan that says within so many years, and if we're overtaxing these farms and they can't afford to do this and they're going to not survive, then maybe the board of supervisors should look at their taxing, you know, and, you know, I know with casinos, Indian casinos, they tax them on their gross receipts, not their net, and that seems totally unfair. And there may be issues with how they're taxing here that is squeezing these farmers. I don't know. I don't know what they make and so I can't say whether that, you know, they're all financially not viable or not, but they, a lot of them had been operating for a number of years without paying taxes. But, and so maybe now it feels that, you know, not as financially viable as it was before, or maybe they are failing. And if they're failing, then maybe they need to look at taxation so that they can afford to switch over. But I think there needs to be a renewable energy plan. It doesn't have to be solar. It should be within so many years. You know, 2025 or three, three years, they should work towards accomplishing that, that plan to, and you know, generator use is not going to go away. But I don't think it should be 24/7 and your only source of energy. But again, I view solar and, you know, in, when it doesn't work, it doesn't work and you need something else. Because what works good in the summer does not work, you know, when the sun's not out. And I think we just need some, you know, even with the, the water usage plan, some the regulations say what they say, but if we're saying that that's not, you know, what we want to move forward with, then there needs to be a water source and usage plan that includes water catchment. If it's a spring and that's okay, then, then that's fine. And if well is part of that, then that's okay also, but it should be not reliant only on one source. I think it should be a combination of the above so that you do have options if one fails. And, and I'm all for waiting for this plan that the county is supposed to be coming up with on how they're going to respond to the drought. And, and that's for all industries and all, all families within and residents within the county, not just bearing down on one industry. I think we need to know, you know, because we're, it, it's not good if we keep on approving 2.0s and we're not looking at the 1.0s. I'm all for going to the 1.0s first, getting them out of the way. I don't believe that you should change the rules completely. But I don't know if what people are saying is true either. I have no, I haven't looked at anybody's, you know, financial statements to see if they're failing or not. So all I hear is we're just, you know, we're going to go upside down. Well, if we're going upside down, then, then why are we approving more and more and more permits? Get through the 1.0s, move to the 2.0s after we're done with the 1.0s. That's pretty much what I got to say. I'm not a big road expert, although I did run the road division for the York Tribe and I know the county's not going to go out there and maintain these roads in the hills, even the ones that are already, they already own. So that's going to be up to the people that use them to come up with the maintenance funds to make. They never maintain any of the ones that I saw. You know, they did, I, I take that back. They did do a good job on some of them. So, and they always were responsive to the county. I don't want to, we worked really well with them, but they just don't have the resources to maintain roads. And so the people who use them are the ones that are going to have to pay to do that. And so be it. And if it's a five-year plan or a 10-year plan, roads are just as expensive as power. You know, you better pull it at the million dollar a mile for roads and power, because that's what I saw that it costs. You're paying prevailing wages. It could be a little bit less if you but, so I, I say we come up with something and if we don't want to totally go 100% on the plan and we want to write this letter that says, these are the things that we're hearing over and over and over again. And, and the, you know, I don't know, I wasn't at the meeting or maybe I don't understand where some of these comments are that we want to make everybody a 2.0. I missed that meeting. Or that conversation, but I did read the community comments and then the comments tonight that, that this body is trying to change everything. And I don't know where that's coming from, other than maybe there's a fear of these losses.
Next. Chair, if I could offer you a suggestion, I'm not wanting to step on your toes particularly. But perhaps one of the ways to get through it is just identify that the commission is concerned with the use of, of generators from the standpoint of the petroleum that's involved, the standpoint of transporting the petroleum to the sites and you know, has written conditions to require the cessation of the use of generators and the conversion to another source of power. And the commission is asking the board whether or not that's an appropriate policy and whether or not that is something that should be pursued as perhaps changes to the ordinance. And, and maybe something to that effect, the commission could just take a vote on. And if it's agreeable, you could include it in the letter. If it's not agreeable, you could move on to the next subject, which may be roads, maybe water. But I, I think that it may be worth it at this point that there sounds to me like there's a strong consensus that we're not looking to, or the commission's not looking to write policy tonight, but is just looking for a direction from the board.
That work for everybody? We're just going in circles here, so.
Yes. Let's do what he said.
Okay. I'm all for that. Generators, then. I'd also like them to look at
That's the other one that comes up. And I'd like them to look at the, I, I would ask that we get rid of the, the self-evaluation and say that if it isn't a county road, it has to be evaluated by either an engineer or the county. And if the county evaluates and they accept it, then they need to take the responsibility for it.
I have to disagree with that at this point. That's changing 1.0.
So I, I just want to be, full disclosure, 1.0 does actually not include road requirements.
No, no road requirements.
No road requirements.
Ah. Okay. I see Thomas.
So as far as I would be comfortable with is I would be comfortable with something along the lines of we're facing challenges with different types of conditions of approval with different projects in regards to generator use, what the amount of sufficient water storage and road conditions. Do you have any guidance for us and how we should move forward? This, these are some of the different types of conditions of approval we have implemented on some projects, but not all. I, I really would like to be very, very passive in this as far as there's this set of rules and we've kind of gone above that with some projects on conditions of approval, but not all. So I would, I would really, I would, I would share the sentiment, those three things are what we come into issues with. But it would be good to ask, hey, these are our problems. Do you have guidance?
Problem is, we don't be specific on what things we see problems with and what possibly could be recommendations. So all the, the, the board is going to do is look at staff and ask them, what do you think? Staff's going to go, see, you know, it works. That's what's going to come across. Our uncle will come and he'll, he'll give the dog and pony show and tell, show them what the different class of roads are, but that doesn't change what the problem is out there. Okay? We need to be specific in the things that we ask them to look at. I was trying to be very specific in the road issue. I was saying, this I think is a problem. You need to get rid of this aspect of the, the road. I think that would make the road thing work better. Okay? Get rid of the self-evaluation for it. Alan, is your mic on?
Yeah.
Can you talk closer?
I'm sorry, I'm getting closer. But that's, I, I, if we're just general, it's just, it's not going to be any good. It doesn't do them any good, isn't going to do anything good for the people. So I, that's why I'm saying to come up, you know, I don't know how else to say it to my fellow commissioners. I've asked over and over, come with specific, pick an item, pick a couple items, but be very specific. That's why I picked, it was just, you know, like a pin needle just to that one item.
I, I don't think there's any harm in asking this board of supervisors to debate the merits of requiring more water storage, transition to renewable energy by 2025 and getting rid of the self-evaluation on roads. I mean, they can have that debate and decide not to do it.
There was, there was three just very specific things. Make a motion to that. I mean, that's exactly
Motion. So motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. There's a second. Any further discussion? I see Peggy's hand up and
I was just going to recommend that if Mr. Ford felt comfortable with the hearing what we've had to say tonight and maybe this motion clarifies it even further, he could draft up a letter for us or whatever it is we want to send to the supervisors and, and we could go from there. Sometimes it's easier to, you know, edit something and move on. But we've all said for two meetings now what we think, and I think he's listening. So put this motion into something that sounds a little more professional and we'll be done.
Would you be comfortable with that?
Be happy to bring a letter back for your consideration on December 16th.
Yeah.
Is the maker of the motion okay with that?
Are, are we doing a motion or a consensus?
That's why I'm asking, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so I'm asking the question.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Director.
Is the, is the second okay with that as well? Is the, is the second okay with that as well?
That works for the secondor as well.
Okay, so then we don't need a motion. We're just making a recommendation that the, from the board, that the director bring us back a letter addressing those issues. And then if we agree with that letter, we will send it on to the board supervisors. But I would suspect that if we have anything we want to change in it, we could do that and agree upon that at the next meeting if we have it before. So let's try and not spend a lot more time on this. We, the director has made it very clearly wants to be doing, uh, projects and not going on. But I, like I said to him, I think this is as important getting the audit through. Uh, and I think in the long run, this would be beneficial to everybody, that if we can make some small tweaks at that point, maybe we won't. We'll see. So thank you, Director, for making that, uh, proposal. Appreciate that. Okay. Where are we adding things? I don't think, is there anything else, anything that we need to know coming up? Anything you want to? No, it was, it was wrong.
So I'm just, Chair, I'm just trying to understand, did we do a first and a second? And then we just did a consensus that a letter's coming back? Are we doing a vote here?
There's no vote. They both, the first and the second, uh, withdrew their motion. So we just think.
Okay, so we're just doing.
To the.
Okay, so I'm just. I'm just going to go on the record then and just say, I, I, I know I'm outvoted here, but I do not support, uh, the generator. I've been pretty vocal about that because of the rules. I would really, if we're going to talk generators, I think it's very important that we differentiate the use between outdoor and mixed light generator use, which is usually under a 50 horsepower generator versus intense ML2, mixed light 2. Um, and I would be totally open to having a discussion around generators if we were able to differentiate that way. But I am not in support of blanking all generators in one.
So let's wait what the board recorder brings back and we'll have some conversation about that. And we may make some tweaks to it, um, after we get to see it. He's, he's listened to what you had to say and then he'll address that in it.
And I'm in agreement with Thomas on that.
Well, that, that's kind of like having an energy plan and part of the energy plan could be that if it's under a certain amount of usage, then, you know, that's part of your plan. And, but if you're at this level, your plan's different. So, um, you know, and it could be that during certain times of the year, I don't know, but whatever's reasonable. And someone with a lot more knowledge, and I, I think I do have a, a little bit on that, but could come up with what is a reasonable plan and that plan should be applied to everyone. So that we're not making one person do one thing, another person do another thing. You know, because it's hard when you see these things coming at you, it's hard to really visualize their equality. And so I think a consistent plan, and that plan could be that it doesn't matter if it's under, you know, 50, then, then you don't need much more than that, you know? But as you progress in usage or 24/7 usage, 12 months out of the year, you got to have a different plan. So that's your plan.
Anything else?
Right.
You adjourn it.
Make that motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second, any discussion on it? All right. Roll call vote. Had to say it.
Melanie McGaver?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Staining, because I did not even clear what the vote is. I think it's to adjourn, which I think we just do anyways.
All right, Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a good night. We'll see you in two weeks.
Good night, everyone.